It is 6:02 on Tuesday, September 17th. We'll call this Hermosa Town Board Regular Meeting to Order. Roll call. Kramer is here. Ferguson?
Yeah.
Coetz.
Here.
And Harris.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. We've got a full house tonight. It looks like, uh, to me, I can see you all better than I have been able to in the past, so I appreciate the new seating arrangement. I think it works well on my end. I hope it does on yours also. Y'all, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Call for changes. We have an addition to engineering. It'll be E, uh, down payment.
For wastewater treatments.
For the wastewater treatment system.
We did that last time.
We approved the purchase, but...
No, no. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Everybody's okay? I would take a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Make a motion we accept agenda as was amended.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Cal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Uh, special meeting items, um, again, please, everybody just be nice. Um, that's A.
Good afternoon or evening.
Second, uh, B on the number three is the appointment of a vacant trustee position. We have had two good, um, volunteers. Think we need to?
Being personnel, it's like me. Didn't think about when you asked for them and then I was wondering why it wasn't.
Well, excuse me. There's been some discussion on the board that we maybe need to go into a quick executive session uh, before we make this decision. And so we will be having, uh, somebody will make a motion to go into executive session at 6:05. It'll just be a short one, 10 minutes. And, uh, we'll call you back in. I'm sorry for this. I, I didn't even give that a thought.
I know, I just think it's...
I need a motion and a second.
I make a motion we, uh, go into executive session for five, 10 minutes to fill the vacancy seats.
Okay. Do I have a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay.
Question on point of order.
Yes.
Uh, they've never done, gotten an executive session in the past when they've had more than one person that, uh, applied.
I agree with you. That's why I didn't think about it. But I think if the board feels more comfortable doing it, I think that that is something that can be done. Is it, uh, legal, Kent?
Yeah, you can call.
We're talking personnel, so, um, I'm, I'm with you, but here we are, so. So we'll call you back in in about 10 minutes. I need a motion to come back in to, or come out of executive session at 6:17.
I make a motion we come out of executive session at 6:17.
Okay. And a second, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Back to them, the subject of discussion is the vacant trustee position's seat. And, um, again, we had two good volunteers. And I say volunteers because I think Cal could attest to the fact that, are you making about five cents an hour these days?
I think it's a penny, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it's about six and a half.
Six and a half. Um, uh, we, we get paid, uh, $75 per meeting for those that don't know. And, um, that is all we get paid. We do not get paid for anything else. Everything else we do is because we love and care for our community. And, uh, so, um, it is basically, I call it basically a volunteer position. Um, Cal has put his time in. Everybody's put their time in, and so these two people, and I will tell you, one is Erin Service and one is Trina Matheny. And thank you both for putting in. We really do appreciate it. Um, I, I'm not going to read these to you, these letters of intent. Would you mind if the public read them, either of you?
Not at all.
Okay. They will be up here so that you can read them after the meeting if you would like to. Um, I would entertain a motion. As a selection, please.
I'd make a motion we appoint Erin.
Shanna makes a motion. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board?
Yeah, I'd like to say my decision was based on Erin having previously ran for the board and narrowly missing that mark. And you've been interested in serving on the board for, for a while now. And secondly, I'm really interested in, um, Trina's additional information on wanting to volunteer on this website and network stuff, so I feel like we're gaining two, really. Um, and I really hope that Trina, you'll run next year when we have three seats open. There's a lot to... I hope so. It's a lot of work.
It is.
It is. But I think you're up for the change.
Anything else, Shanna?
No, thank you.
I, I base my vote also on the same thing, that Erin has put himself out there for an election and, um, barely missed, um, uh, I think it was three-point difference, which is, makes me say there's two good candidates there. And I appreciate that, uh, he has done that and is still willing. And I feel the same way, Trina. Um, three seats available next year. And to all of you, I'm, I'm telling you all this. Um, my seat will be up for election. Donna's seat will be up for election. And the seat we're appointing tonight will be up for election. So two of them will be three-year seats. And one of them will be a one-year seat.
Two-year.
One year.
You gotta like the last year and it's...
One year.
Well, the point Vicki had, I only had a two-year seat.
What? Yeah, because you, you filled a position that somebody quit also.
I did. When you ran with Vicki and Jerry?
Yep, you did.
You had a two-year seat.
Yep. At any rate, we'll go through that and, and, uh, I'm, I'm sure that's what it is. At any rate, um, a vote, please. All those in favor of appointing Erin?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Thank you, Erin. If you'd like to come up here. We'll have Kent give you your oath of office. Do you?
I have.
Or do you want to do it?
Well, I've done the other one.
Okay. Okay, you can do it. Come right on up here and Terry will do it for you.
I'll give you this just to follow along. I want you to raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Erin Service.
Having been appointed to the Office of Board of Trustees.
Having been appointed to the Office of Board of Trustees.
With and for the town of Hermosa.
With and for the town of Hermosa.
In said county and state.
In said county and state.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of South Dakota.
The Constitution of the state of South Dakota.
And the ordinance of said town of Hermosa.
And the ordinances of said town of Hermosa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my knowledge and ability, perform all duties of my set office of Board of Trustees.
To the best of my knowledge and ability, perform all duties of my set office of Board of Trustees.
Congratulations.
Fun, Cal.
Right here is your seat.
Should I come back?
You should come now, yes. You are official. Next on the agenda is consent calendar, approval of September 3rd's regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion we accept the, um, minutes for the September 3rd meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Donna. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Erin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Next on the agenda is conflict of interest declarations. I just expect everybody to do it when it's time. If they have one, tell us then. That brings us to the engineer, Anthony. Thank you, sir, for coming tonight.
So the first item I have is, um, a motion, request a motion for me to prepare a RFP, request for proposal for sewer cleaning and televising services. Um, so what that is, is we need to have a list of service providers that we can go down that list when we have a situation like, like we had over the Labor Day weekend, where we had a clog in our sewer that caused a backup. And the reason we don't just select one person is because they might be dealing with some other emergency. And that gives us the ability to just go down the list to the next one down. We know the prices already. We know what they can, what their capabilities are, how far away they are. And so we know, that's how we'll prioritize that list after we get the responses from the proposals. Pretty common for towns to do this. Um, and the service providers are used to this because, you know, they know that even bigger cities that have their own tractor trucks or their own, uh, equipment, they'll do this because their truck could be broke down or they could be dealing with one emergency and they got another one at the same time, so. Um, so that's, that's really what that is. Um, schedule-wise, um, we need to have the line from, um, the outfall of our lagoon system to the Battle Creek, a couple hundred feet. We need that jetted out. We need to jet it out before winter, so, um, first thing I would do is get that person out there to do that, um, this fall. And that's part of our budget for the lagoon expansion and the treatment plant, so. So I would probably have something ready for you by next meeting. And then I'd put it out to the service providers. I'd try to invite as many people as I can find in the area or within the, within a certain radius. And then, um, try to bring that back for our second October board meeting for approval of the list.
Okay, all right. I need any motion?
Yep.
To give you the ring to do that one.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
Come on, Son.
I'll make it.
I'll make the motion.
Now you're going to second it.
Now you'll second it, yeah. Shanna made it. Erin seconded it. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Thank you, Anthony.
Okay, next one is, um, land purchase agreement for the, for the land to build the North Water Tank. Um, should be in your packets. We've kind of gone back and forth with the, with the landowner. He's here today, so, um, I'm sure you can, if you guys have any questions, you can give him a shout. So we had a purchase price. Um, we kind of went between, kind of met in the middle, um, a purchase price. And then, um, there's an amount that, um, we're holding that was water taps. And so that's being, um, put into a, a developer fund to be used for development of sewer infrastructure. So that way, um, we can take advantage of the, um, investment we have, so. So I guess I'll just let people ask questions.
Mr. Preston?
Mr. Brown, you have a question?
This has been a long time. You've been working hard with both Anthony and Cal, and I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I appreciate, uh, moving this forward.
Yeah, it's been good. And, and you are in agreement of this?
If it's the same as the one that Toby here's...
It is. It is. All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we, uh, agree on the land purchase price for Preston's.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Um, kind of amended to, uh, in addition to accepting the purchase price, though we accept the land purchase agreement as written.
Okay. You're all right with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So as amended?
As presented.
As presented. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion carried. Thank you. C.
Um, so this one is a resolution that I believe our bond council prepared. It's a necessary document for state law. If we're going to go borrow money, we need to do this resolution, so. I think Collier's prepared that, right, Terry?
Yes.
So he's obviously, they always do this when they go out and do a bond. They always ask for a little bit more than, than we ask them to go out for, to give us a buffer due to inflation, et cetera. But, um, it doesn't mean that my budget estimate has changed at all. It's just, it gives us some flexibility because it's a process that's, uh, time-consuming, so. So I think the terms were really pretty good for the, for the interest rate that's out there now. And, uh, he ended up getting us, does he get locked in later?
If I can just, so I talked to Toby this morning, and basically this resolution just authorizes the town to borrow the money for the, you'll notice there's an exhibit A on there. He said that'll be replaced because right now there isn't any amount or, uh, doesn't have any interest or anything like that. Their terms are not, so he said that'll be put. So this, we just have to do this first, and it's just part of government work. You gotta do the, you know, go through the bond council and get the, borrow the, have the authority to borrow the funds first.
This isn't the first reading of that, though.
It's a resolution. Because those can be approved by just a motion and the, your, an ordinance has to be read once.
The resolution still needs to be read by title and posted on the agenda as reading of, does it not?
Not, not, not according to the law. The resolution just has to include in the minutes as we post, you know, as we publish.
Has this all changed yet?
I'm sorry?
Has this all changed? You don't have to post it as a, you can have a resolution on the agenda?
No, I think you do, you have to post the reading of the resolution. They just have to read it once.
You just have to read it once, all right?
Yeah.
And then you have to include the full resolution in the minutes, or it has to be published separately. But it has to be always.
Yeah, I'll have to do that.
There's one to lock it up.
So just, this can be approved as the reading of? Or does it need to say reading of?
I think it's inherent in the fact that...
So this is the reading of, the approval of?
They just have to be posted, have to be...
I don't know, Harvey.
There was no way to make that shorter?
Nothing, just like a legal one. Fair enough. Don't worry about it.
And then it came to pass.
We're okay, so, right? Yes.
Yes, and when you look at the titles of particular, um, uh, titles of each subsection, of each provision or section of the, of the agenda, it has to be so that a reasonable person could determine that there's an action concerning that item. You should be able to reasonably discern that, and that's
Okay.
sufficient.
And should be published as a summary instead of 25 pages? On the bottom?
You think the statute changed that much?
No. No, it says it has to be published. Either in the minutes or published separately.
Well, either way, it's the same cost, so it doesn't really matter. It's just, it is a lot.
Yeah, it's a big...
And, and, did Neil write it?
Toby wrote it.
Toby wrote it.
Custer product will be a little thicker this time.
I guess so. All right. So, motion? What are we making a motion on?
Is this the approval of the resolution? I'll make a motion to approve resolution 202405, giving approval to the issuance and sale of a wastewater project right near bond.
Thank you, Shanna. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. D.
So this is, um, purchased water and sewer pipe. It's a little vague, but, um, from, uh, Mr. Preston because, uh, he has an inventory of water and sewer pipe sitting up on the north end of town. And so what has been suggested is that, um, we look at the price that he provided us, and I do have a copy of it. Um, I have to do a little bit more, because I, I went out there and I, I did an inventory quickly of what he had. I said it'd be nice to double-check that, but, um, roughly the big items are water and sewer pipe, eight-inch. He's got 8,940 linear feet of eight-inch pipe, uh, water main. And then he's got 5,712 linear feet of eight-inch, uh, sanitary sewer main at both PBC. Um, he's got some four-inch sanitary sewer main, 1,288 linear feet. And then he's got a little bit of six-inch water main, 180 linear feet. So I kind of did the math based on, um, his invoicing. I have to, it's a little difficult to double-check it with the supply house because it's been two years. And at that time, this guy that was buying the pipe was pretty prolific and he was buying a lot, so they're, they're trying to figure that out. Um, I had a call with him today. But, um, just, just going with one item, which is the sewer pipe, and comparing the prices, and this would be like the, this would be probably the, the closest, because it's, sewer pipe's not under pressure, so it's the least expensive. And so, um, it hasn't experienced as much of an inflation. But, um, his price is $10.69 a linear foot. My calculations are correct here. Um, and we paid, uh, a week ago, I believe, $11.64. So you're having savings there of at least a dollar a linear foot, um, on that. Water main, um, if my numbers are correct, is at 22.76 a linear foot. And I believe our eight-inch is $29 right now. So it's a saving of $7, almost $7. Um, and then six-inch, again, it's about a dollar savings per linear foot, that smaller pipe. I mean, it's only got 180 linear feet of that. So I think we're, you're going to see pretty significant savings in water main. And our drinking water alone, um, has a, could potentially have several thousand linear feet of, uh, water main pipe, eight-inch.
And, and how much is there?
He's got 8,940 linear feet.
And the sewer pipe, how many?
5,712.
And that's basically, the rest is small.
Yeah, that's the big, that's the big ticket stuff. And, um, so just, just to give you an idea, out of $291,000 of materials, 264,000 of it is those two items, sewer and water main.
So then we still have to buy it?
So what would be suggested is, is that I make an inventory. Like, for example, I've got a lagoon design and I have a wastewater treatment design. So there's some sewer pipe in that. So what I can do is, on my sheets, my plan sheets, it's got quantities. So I can pull those quantities off. The town could buy them and assign them to the contractor. There's not a lot of pipe in that one, so they're probably not going to care. It's mostly earthwork. There's some manhole structures too, he has out there. Um, if I can match up the bases, there's a couple manhole structures we could get at 2022 prices as well. So those are a little bit harder to inventory. Pipe direction, if I'm not returning, it's, you can make it whatever you want.
Chuck, excuse me just a minute. Jerry? Chuck? How do you feel about this?
I think he's heading in the right direction.
Okay, all right. Jerry?
Is this a, just buy as you need or buy all and then, then restore?
No, we just buy as we need. Because I think he still needs a certain amount for his inventory. It's roughly going to add up to all being gone between the both of us.
And so the projects that you have projected now are going to use up what you plan on buying?
Yeah, yeah. What you see, you look at it, maybe roughly half. We, the town will use it and we'll save a good amount of money on it.
Sounds good to me.
Cal, did you have?
Uh, yeah, Anthony, have you, have you figured a approximate percent savings we would save going this way versus buying new?
So the water main's going to be the big savings because that's, they've really inflated the price on that. If my 29...
It's a stick you save.
Yeah, how much, how much is this?
20 footers, I mean, you're sitting seven...
29 bucks, sound right, for a 20 footer?
A foot?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, for a foot, but I mean, if you're saving $7, it's 20 foot. You save $140 a stick. So every thousand feet, you save $7,000.
21%.
Yeah. It's good, good savings.
Okay. So you need an okay for that?
Yeah, and then I'll, I'll get a very thorough inventory of everything in a tally adding up to the total that Mr. Preston thinks he has there. And then we'll be very organized in what we need. We really have, uh, four distinct projects, so as we do, we'll all sign the projects.
Okay. Motion?
I make a motion that we let Anthony go ahead with the purchase agreement for the water and the sewer pipe.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Erin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Last?
Last one's the new item, which was the, uh, down payment on the wastewater treatment plant. So, um, I guess the only motivation for this is that there's some period of time we have to wait roughly a month or something for closing, right? Because of the resolution, and then it gets, the bank takes four to six weeks to just close on our, on that loan. So, um, I think in the interest of time, given that winter is coming, after Halloween, we won't be able to irrigate anymore. We're trying, we've, we've got everything implemented out at the lagoons to irrigate as much as... We're trying, we've got everything implemented out at the lagoons to irrigate as much as possible in the next six weeks, to draw the lagoons down, so then we've got enough capacity there for the time we need to build the treatment plant and get it operational, so I think that'll... This was more Cal's discussion with Mike Short, but my understanding, Cal, is that this is kind of what you guys agreed, so they hit a lot of, allow the whole thing to move forward, right?
Yes, sir, yeah. Last meeting, we approved that we would purchase it, it was basically, we signaled our intent to Mr. Short that we'd purchase his treatment plant, but, you know, I mean, he's a businessman, he's been doing a lot of things for us as far as getting the treatment plant up and running, so that Anthony could go look at it, make sure that it's going to work when we get here, and, you know, I just think we should show, kick him a down payment upfront before the, before the funding gets here, just because, you know, he's shown a lot of, um...
Good faith.
Yeah, good name.
Good faith.
Good faith on his part towards us, so he can't just continue to carry this cost forever, he has projects that he needs to do, and so that's, that was my discussion with him, and then I discussed the issue with the other people on the finance committee, and we decided that this was a good way to move, so.
And I think I'd add that he's agreed to, he's agreed to include the generator in the sale, right? The propane generator?
Um, that's added additional cost, but highly discounted, $10,000, so we'll have to talk about that later, but I think it's a good buy to go that way.
Only thing that matters for me is that I can then heat the building with propane, because it just pushes it over the head. Black Hills Energy will put a heat meter, but now we're adding more load to our service versus propane generator, propane radiant heat. Radiant heat is the optimum for a treatment plant, because you've got to exhaust the air out, 12 air exchanges per hour, so you're losing all your heat. When you're building radiant, you heat the objects, you don't lose the heat as fast. Plus, we only care about the biological process, so as long as the tank, which is steel, is warm, and the water inside it is as high as can be, it has a heating element in it, we don't lose, you know, efficiency in the biology, so it can be 50 degrees in the building, it won't matter.
Okay. Go ahead.
Anthony, did you go over with him that the heating element in the tank, everything they've done for heating over the past, are we pretty much on the same path as they've been on?
Yeah, so, so they're actually, so they have a, they bought, they ran our system from 2008 to 2022, 21, end of 21, so they used that heating element only, I think, the last couple years. And then their new system, they thought, well, we don't need to order that, because we have a heated building, and now they're realizing that they actually are going to be retrofitting the heating system to replace what they had and drop in our system, because they opted out on the second phase, and now they're regretting it, so, because the water's cold, and when the temperature drops, it really significantly decreases our, the capacity. It can almost cut it in half.
So they were primarily heating the building and hoping that that would heat the tank, rather than relying on heating element?
Yeah, paying a couple thousand dollars a month to them, heating bill. It's not really getting into the water yet, yeah, it's like 70 degrees in there, wasn't really working, yeah.
So a motion to approve down payment for the wastewater treatment plant?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion? Dan?
How much was that down payment then?
A hundred thousand.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Karen, did you aye? Thank you. Alright, thank you, Anthony. Okay, I'll get that, you know, that voice down in my ear one of these days. Planning and zoning?
I have for a minute, 2024-35 for Bonnie Morelli, she wants to put an eight by 10 wooden shed on her property that's in the floodplain, and Elmer Claycombe has provided a staff report on that, it's in your packet. If you want to read the recommendation on that, on the back page.
Yeah, I read it earlier, and I just... So the way I read it, this application should therefore be denied until a hydraulic analyst analysis is submitted, is that correct, Elmer?
That is what the ordinance actually requires.
Okay. Bonnie?
What if I move it to the south end of the property, since the house next to me is not in the floodplain, and against that fence, we build the last plant?
So generally speaking, anything that's put in the floodplain has to have, be able to have water flow under it?
It's going to be up on blocks. The blocks will be in the ground, and then there's a four by, four by four?
Yeah, but excuse me, they're not actually like in the ground, they're dug down like an inch to level them.
They're just set into the ground, and then the...
And then there's four by fours on top of the blocks, and then the bottom of the frame is on, is over to the four by fours.
So how, how many inches will there be between the outside floor of the building and the ground level?
Just a rough estimate, I would say 12 to 14 inches.
12 to 14 inches, okay. Well, this, um...
I have a picture here on my phone, I've already put the blocks down and built just the bottom frame to, so that way when the guy did his assessment, he'd have an idea. I have a picture on my phone if you want to see it.
This is my son, by the way.
Hi, nice to meet you all.
Hello.
I'm a new resident and a new voter here, so.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Does that cover the anchoring requirement, then?
I think I need to just give you a clear picture of what's the situation there, and what has been done with other similar requests in that immediate area.
Okay.
Because it's not, it's not arbitrary, it's very repetitious to what we've been doing for years, okay? There's more stuff here than I need. Just to tell you, there's five more books that are similar to this that I have on Hermosa, they're not quite as big, but that gives you an idea. Just to answer, respond to one question, she had said that the south end is not in the floodplain.
No, I said the house next to me isn't, and mine is right next to his.
The entire lot is in floodway. So we're dealing with a floodway issue, it's a whole lot different if it's in a flood fringe than if it's in floodway. And going back in with the same lot, there was a request back in 2014 to put a carport on the parcel. What the applicant submitted to us was an engineer's certificate, saying there would not create a rise in water surface elevation, so we approved it, exactly as the ordinance requires. And by pursuing what we've done in that immediate vicinity, just behind her parcel, it was lot 268 McDermott, and it had a very similar request for a shed in 2016. The response was the very same, that they would need an engineer's analysis to verify a no rise in the water surface elevation due to the shed. The, you may know that we've had, some cases, we've had sheds that could be placed in the, I'm going to call it the shadow of a building, where water has to separate and go around the house, but the shed could be put right in that shadow behind the house. And we've accepted that because the flow patterns were such that it's a application that is accepted by FEMA, and they have documentation that fit. However, the Morelli home, it's all open to the west of that, there's no house there to break it, I'm hoping maybe the reason no house has been built there is no one wants to build in that flood hazard area.
It belongs to the house on the south side of the, that vacant lot, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
That belongs to the house on the south side of it?
But there is, that's what I'm saying, there is no house on that lot, so...
The clerks told us they wouldn't build on that house so we could see that, at Black Hills.
They would have to, whoever wants to build on that lot would have to formally request a building permit, which would be rather difficult to get. Those of you that have lived here long enough to remember the '72 flood, I look back at pictures periodically when I'm doing these things, just to remind me of what it looked like. In any event, for this particular case, and it's usual, if I have to recommend not approving something, the applicants typically are upset, but we're being consistent, and the reason we're doing it is to protect everyone in that area. We don't want to cause that water surface to rise, and thinking about where those houses are set, and which direction flow has to come through there. Those houses could not be set in a wrong, a worse orientation from a flooding standpoint, because they're perpendicular direction flow. The only way the water can get through is that little strip between houses. So, had engineering thought gone into it when that subdivision was designed, it would have been sensible to orient the building so that floodwaters could get through and not be as damaging. So if you have other questions, that kind of covers the background on what's happening here.
Actually, if you don't mind, I have two questions. My first question would be, there is a four to five foot earth and dam there, which is called the railroad tracks, so is the water flowing from the west, from where the railroad tracks are, or is the water expected to flow toward the tracks? And if it's expected to flow toward the tracks, can the railroad not put tunnels in there with piping to allow the water to drain? It's a dam, it is a, it's a dam there.
And it has been, I'm going to say, analyzed numerous times as to what could be done to reduce the hazard in this area. You need to look at the top of this area and realize that you've got Battle Creek over there, and the low spot in that whole valley goes right through Ferguson subdivision, and railroad tracks built on an embankment sloping up to the higher elevation here in town, and it's in the, last information we submitted to the... Whatever the name is of the organization that we did a big report for, we got to deal with again.
FEMA.
Looking at how much it potentially would cost to try to do massive channelization, different bridges, it's, the, the, I won't say simplest, the best solution, I'm saying in my estimation, would be to simply move those houses to someplace outside of floodplain, and the town actually working with the homeowners that will get funding to do one. And that's not going very far into solving that, so you're forced to be stuck with the fact that, and the homes in that area that have mortgages, in all likelihood are carrying flood insurance, which is rather expensive, because they're in a very high hazard area. There will be another flood, I can't tell you when, but I am firmly convinced, people can talk all about climate change, the only thing is, nobody knows whether floods are increasing or decreasing due to climate change, so we don't have statistical information to be able to draw conclusions. Anything else?
I will, I would like to comment on this, too. I've been here since, since the flood in '07, a lot of us sitting here were here. It was, it was a mess, we were very, very fortunate not to lose a single citizen, and we understand the problems and the disappointments in your subdivision, due to the fact that we can't just allow garages and sheds and all that, it's a disappointment to us, too. It, in your case, the way your house sits, your shed would have to be in your front yard, in order to be...
Not in the front yard.
In, in order to meet that gray area.
Yeah, if it were in the front yard, it would be protected from the flood flows.
But the water is expected to flow from the west.
Oh, definitely.
Correct.
If I put it in the front yard, if I say that, would you agree with it, would you permit it?
Well, he's got to look at the roadway and all that.
Setbacks.
Setbacks would be something, but it would be way easier to approve it in, in that means, yes.
There's sheds all over the place in that area.
Yes.
Sheds everywhere.
I know.
There's two sheds, like a few feet from where she wants to put hers, no offense.
No, Katrina's, and there's two sheds there.
And that is, her, her house is creating the gray area where those sheds are at.
Why was this subdivision allowed, then?
Yeah, and that, FEMA allowed it.
FEMA allowed this, and it said, you can't do anything?
Everybody allows it, I mean...
I have the wrong house.
Do you want to really refer to how you got that subdivision?
Yeah.
We deal with it at the next council meeting. We deal with it at the next council meeting because it will come up then. Ferguson subdivision was not approved by the town, nor the county. The county refused to approve it. And the applicant, and I've gained this from talking to people with the county that had followed this for a long time. The applicant came to town and applied the annex, which put the request for the subdivision in the town's hands. Well, basically, the town didn't know what to do and they vacillated. There's a state ordinance that basically says if the town doesn't take action within ninety days, it is assumed under that state statute that it's approved. So the document that is in the county's recorder's office has a page that is this statement that's saying approval is via the state statute. The town did not sign the plat acceptance. There's a statement just saying that it was because of the state statute. Now, in, in wonderful hindsight, people would probably have done different. But that's the story of a lot of things that happened.
Then, Jared?
I just wondered, the, the money that we got from that FEMA grant, the five hundred and some thousand dollars for, that's gonna be used for doing some of the design and some of the stuff, was, you know, to look at the west side of the tracks and doing something like that so the tracks don't actually overflow again. If that is successful, would that relieve some of that pressure on the other side? Depending upon what was done?
Basically, no. It is, it's such a large pervasive problem that there's no smaller answer in the study done by Ferber back nearly, it's not twenty years ago. They have a extensive analysis of what could be done. And it involves re-channeling of Battle Creek, revising bridges, et cetera. So it has been thought of and it always comes up with, essentially, it costs more to remove the air from floodplain than it would to simply remove the buildings and move them to someplace that is out of the floodplain. And I wish I could tell you different. I've looked at it thinking that I could find a, an error in the basis for it. It's just, it's topography. It's the way things were built years ago and we're having to live with it.
I will say, first off, we have dealt with railroad. We have tried very hard to get the railroad to do something different, better. And, and the railroad is, is gone. You know, they don't, they just, excuse me for saying that. They, they just don't have to. They built America and, yeah.
I understand.
And another thing is, we, we believe that part of the problem was because, caused because there is one culvert through there. And it is behind the home that is closest to the tracks down south further than you guys are. And it is not in the city limits. But there is a culvert there and we believe that that was jammed, filled up. And so we try to periodically walk through there and make sure that that is kept open. And that would alleviate a lot of the pressure also. It's, it's an unfortunate situation. It was, we had nine inches of water in just a very short amount of time. And upstream, there was so very much tree limbs and, and trash and debris that came down and also plugged it up worse. And so we try very hard also to make sure that, that those things are cleaned up. We have worked with the school of mines in that area also in the past and we do what we can. And when I say that, I, I have to tell you that I, I am on the Black Hills Recovery Network. I was here during the time. I was here during the meetings with the governor. And there was a lot being said, but I can tell you why my heart is so in it and why I am so sorry to say that I would vote no on it because of the fact that in the nineteen seventy-two flood, I lost an aunt and uncle and a cousin and my cousin is still one of the four bodies that has never been recovered. So flooding to me is a major issue. And I don't wanna see that happen to anybody. And, and like I said a little earlier, I'm so very happy that nobody, nobody, we have lost nobody in that. But back to your shed. You had a question?
I did have another question. I'm curious, if a hydrological evaluation is required by statute, how come my mom just paid four hundred and something dollars for the engineer to tell her that? If it was, if it was statutory required, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars she gave the engineer for him to come to that conclusion? If it was in the statute already? Seems like she spent three hundred and sixty-eight dollars for nothing.
For nothing.
Any, any answers to that, anybody?
Well, my answer to it is that in order to, that's actually for perhaps analyzing the floodplain development permit and reaching the conclusion with the exhibits that went along with it, showing how deep the flow is, what direction the water flowed across, where the flood hazard area is. And then going back and seeing what has been done in the past. And one thing that struck me when I went back, 'cause I, you know, I've got a whole bunch of things that, this lot has, this is the fourth floodplain development permit request on the lot. Three of them were approved. The first one was for the carport that the engineering analysis was done, just like the ordinance required.
The other two were fences.
And then the two fences, which we looked at as meeting requirements of the ordinance. Then we looked at this one and I don't just jump out and say, no, I recommend not approving it. I went back and looked at, what have we done before? What are the conditions? And one is realistic because I'm making a recommendation to the board. And while the final decision is theirs, I do not take it lightly as to why I make this recommendation.
With all due respect though, if that was a statutory requirement, why did my mom have to pay for that middle step? Where she could have just jumped straight to the hydrological evaluation? That's still three hundred and sixty-eight dollars?
Well, that would be a town thing and I guess we better look at the way we handle floodplain or those kind of situations. So that being said...
If I don't get approved, do I get my money back for the permit that I'm not getting? Because I've already paid a hundred dollars for the permit. If I'm not gonna get a permit for it, will I get my money back?
I, we have to, I have to pass, right?
I understand it as an application fee, not a application permit.
We'll check into that one too, Mommy. I'm sorry. I'm sorry that I can't answer you. Aaron?
So it does sound like you are comfortable though with looking at the option of moving the shed to where it'll be in, like you call the shadow?
I would go without doing that.
Absolutely. All right.
You have to meet the setbacks still. So you'll have to look at the building permits for the setbacks on the front edge of the house and the sides of the house and...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Is that available online? Is there one side I can go to?
It is, isn't it? Yeah.
One item, just to clarify the question about, do they have to pay the fees? On the floodplain development permit application, it reads, please be advised, all permits are reviewed by the town, the town engineer. These expenses will be included in the permit fees and applicant will be responsible for those expenses.
They're including any permit fees? I paid for the permit. I don't get it. I don't understand that.
You paid for an application fee?
So I paid a hundred dollars just so I could say, oh, can I get one? Oh my gosh. I need to do it. All right.
Aaron? Elmer, do you have a precedent situation for that, so we can, if they do move it, so we can make sure they're not gonna just move it, have it moving around their property and have it still not get approved? Like an example for them to go off of?
I believe from what I can remember of the orientation of the house and the other cases that we dealt with, that that would meet the requirements of thinking that it's in what's referred to as the conveying shadow from the house. But it has, as they said, it's gotta be the other requirements that go on with it.
The house is right here.
I think it has, it needs more definite measurements. Mommy, they'll have to, he'll have to do some probably definite measurements on that to make sure. And then provide you with the information of the size that it can be or whatever.
So that, so that's a go on that? Do you have the information that we need to work, to work with, if you're okay to do it?
In front of the house?
I don't think I should try to make any more conclusions until I see what is actually submitted.
Okay.
I did go as far as, as calling and asking if you're planning to just have the shed at ground level. And at that point, you said, yeah, it's just gonna be on the ground. So I responded to that. Kind of you're pointing out you wanna rise, widen, raise it, but it still is in the same, same situation.
That's fine. No, just calm down. I, I understand completely, sir. Thank you very much. And I wanna thank all of you for your time and for listening to us.
Jerry?
Yes, one of the things we don't want to do is to mislead them about the shed in the front yard because there's a clear ordinance that says the sheds can't be in the front yard. So there'd have to be a variance. So what we don't wanna do is let them think that, well, if they do that, they come and get a permit to do it and they come back and say, well, it doesn't meet that other. But there are variances, the town can give variances. So what we wanna give them is the total picture of, okay, that's not allowed in our deal, but you can request a variance. Now, is the town board gonna give them a variance? You know, all that needs to be upfront. We don't wanna mislead them.
And I think that all depends on the measurements where it has to sit, how big it is, how far from the property lines and all of that. And I think that, I mean, I think every one of us are, we understand that sheds are needed, you know, I mean, every, every home has stuff. You know, mowers and you name it. And it's either the stuff sits out or, or the shed is built. And I think that we will, as a board, we will do everything we can to help you figure this out and make it possible for you.
Thank you all. I will develop a submission and I will submit over to the West.
Thank you very much. Jerry?
Also, in order to get a variance, I understand the variances are fairly expensive. So you might, you might wanna give them all the information before they decide to go downtown.
Variance is seven hundred and fifty dollars.
That's, that's what I wanna write. Thank you, Jill.
What is a variance? What is a variance?
It gives you permission to do something that's not, not in the ordinance, but we just wanna make sure they get the whole picture when they leave here so they don't go thinking they're gonna get, be able to do something.
So Jill, is there only one charge for variance? We don't have one, a smaller fee for a smaller variance and a...
We do not, as a public...
So that is something else that we need to look at and possibly change? Thank you.
In the past, isn't there a public hearing required for a variance?
No, thank you.
In the past, a long time ago, maybe we were doing, and then once, wait, worst labors for this, and then there's that, you know, prohibit waving, section of whatever ordinance, and tried to get away from that. But it seems to me like the variances require a hearing.
Hearing?
A public hearing and not, and the cost and the publications and all that?
Yeah.
Mailings to people with the...
With them to notify them.
Also, part of the fee that you're paying for him to look at that, you know, with the shadow in this area and that hour and to do the mathematics, there'll be additional cost in looking at,
Wow.
you know, nailing it down. That's, you're paying for his time. It's not part of the permitting process. You're paying for his time to do the calculations. So it's whether it's, how much it's worth to you. I mean, there is a cost involved when you're using...
All right, Jill, it's time.
Well, there is a lot of misconception here. I will have to take the hit for being the developer. However, when that plan was laid out, FEMA was contacted and then, and they came up here and said, well, you had an incident, but that doesn't mean that you can't build there. So in nineteen seventy-two, there was eighteen inches of water went over that ground. Exact same ha, thing happened. The railroad tracks filled up the water and then it broke free. Fortunately, at that time, there were no houses there. So their recommendation and ruling was that the eighteen inches of water that went over that property, that the floor based on flood, based flood elevation, that the living floor had to be twelve inches above that eighteen inch base floodplain. So that put the floors at thirty inches above ground. And as those houses were built, including double wides and whatever else, foundations were poured in such a, such a circumstance that those houses were met that thirty inches, the eighteen and twelve, that's thirty inches. A double wide setting on an eight inch footing and two rows of block and the ten inch frame put them well above the thirty inches that was required. So that subdivision was approved by FEMA. And there are papers to back that up. Unfortunately, when people sell those houses, a lot of this information is not in the disclosure. So once they bought it and they don't understand why they can't build a garage, or they can't build a shed, or they can't do carports or whatever. The main reason that the carports that have been approved is the fact that they are not closed in. So the water can flow through those carports as well as, you know, the, the buildings that are up thirty inches above the ground. Now, the ones that washed away, that thirty inches was ignored. So consequently, they were about eight inches lower than what the permits required. So those, there was actually two strategic areas. The water came from the south from Battle Creek. And when the railroad trestle and that stuff did not handle the volume, then it backed up on the west side of the railroad tracks. And it, it worked exactly the same as it did in nineteen seventy-two. When the water got high enough that it went over the tracks, then it washed out. It wasn't any different than a dam dike breaking from a flood situation or anything else. This situation has been looked at a dozen times, how to reinforce the railroad tracks to eliminate this. I've made several suggestions of relief culverts and riprap and stuff on the side. However, as you mentioned earlier, the railroad was here first. So consequently, that's how the town evolved, was from railroad and stockyards. So they're not really interested in what we wanna do. So consequently, you know, there could be things done, relieve that whole situation. You know, that was, if you're in the hundred year floodplain or you're in the five hundred year floodplain. And ironically, this happened And ironically, this happened from seventy-two to two thousand and seven. So that was relatively short period of time. However, in my own defense, the development was approved by FEMA.
If FEMA approved it, why, what is the problem? If they approved it...
People wanna build things in there that's not approved. That's what most problem is. There's a full list of what...
So if I wanted to build a room where that carport is, I could do it?
No.
Because it's above.
You can't have a solid structure in flood plain because if you would've been here at that time, you'd have seen sheds and everything else that was floating.
And how did my house get built? It wasn't built till two thousand and eight.
Because it was built high enough to...
Right, so...
To meet flood plain criteria. There's an elevation certificate on every one of those houses. And they have to be at a certain height. There had to be a loma on every house when it was built.
All right, I'm, I'm sorry, we'll have to, if you want more questions answered, Bonnie, we'll, you come up to the office or meet with Chuck or something like that. This all concerns the, the shed and the fact that we will not be approving it tonight.
Thank you all.
Well, thank you for coming and we appreciate what you're going through. I'm sorry.
I just moved her from Ohio, I just wanna say, from along the Ohio River. So I'm familiar with flooding and railroad railways. It's a bully of me, it's ongoing in Kentucky, West Virginia, everywhere.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a motion, yes, to deny it on that filing officially. First and second? Motion, Shannon and Don, first and second. Thank you both. All those in favor? Motion carried, thank you all. I'm sorry, Jill, you're next, again.
I got twenty twenty-four dash thirty-seven, it's just a demo permit. I already approved it, it's just a FYI for Chuck Ferguson.
Thank you very much.
And seven C twenty twenty-four oh nine is still pending.
Okay, thank you. Nothing else that you know of at the time? Thank you very much for staying. I appreciate that. Elmer, thank you very much.
You know the next one's gonna be harder than this.
I know. I understand that, yes. Just brings you back. We like seeing you.
Well, thank you.
All right, this brings us to claims. Thank you, Joe, have a good night. Yeah, somewhere I missed it. All right. Any questions about claims?
Sorry, it's been a little too... I made a motion to approve the claims as stated.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I have a second?
I'll second through discussion.
Thank you, Cal. Your discussion is, sir?
I just wanted to ask Chuck, this sewer line repair, is that putting one down at fairgrounds?
Yes.
Did, did we, did we talk to the fair board about getting that reimbursed or?
Kind of felt on the fears, but anyway, there's no... Clean up from the seventh, that would be put back out yet, and just kind of hurry up and get her down and, so there's more of that to be done there yet.
It is, in the appearance, that it was the person that put the fence up that, that went through the pipes.
Yep.
The fair board, I believe, hired the fencers. It, it was marked. It is a, you got just that part of the bill, please? We have two fair board people here right now and I appreciate your attendance, thank you so much. So the bill for that is seven hundred and twenty dollars. And we had no choice but to fix it immediately. There was no calling anybody, there was no nothing. It had to be done and, and it got done. And it, it was not the citizens' fault in the city of Hermosa. And I would hope, I also understand that you all don't wanna spend any more money than you have to either, and I, and I do get that very much. I, I would like to put forth, and I have not discussed with my board this, this is what I am putting forth, I would like to suggest that the fair board or roping pub or whoever it is pays half in the town of Hermosa that they have. And if you would take that to your boards, we will, of course, pay the bill right now because it had to be done. There was no choice. And, but we would appreciate it if you would put forth in it also.
You guys say anything, Phil?
Jerry?
No, no, go ahead. The concern that we have is we, we followed all the legality, we called in a locate. You're supposed to stay eighteen inches away from the locate marks. We were posted at eighteen inches down by the trees, which is nowhere near the sewer line where it actually penetrated the sewer. We were significantly further than the eighteen inches away from those locate marks. So that's one concern that I have. The other concern that we have is the depth of the posts. And Greg can speak more to that.
Yeah, we had, because I know it was brought up that the sewer line's over four foot deep and the posts were over fifty-one inches in. And when the posts were pulled out, we did go take pictures of that. And the one post was three foot six inches in and the other one was three foot nine inches in. So neither of them were even to the four foot level yet. So even if we were right over top of the sewer pipe, it still should not have touched it. And we just have kind of felt at our board meeting, and we can take it back to them, we sure will do that, but we just felt it wasn't our responsibility. We kinda thought that's why you call eight one one is to make sure you're not responsible for asking.
I have not measured it up there with stick, I, I will be honest with you there. But I was there during the timeframe of, of it being worked on. And it was, the, the pipe is deeper than the three feet and it couldn't have just been moved right there.
It is deeper than three feet. Well, I mean, we have a picture, you could see right on the ground where the pipe was and one was three foot six and one was three foot nine.
And I think that, thank you, Travis. The markings is straight from one pit to another pit. And with that, and in their concrete pipes, they, or PVC, whatever, they're not bending. And so I, from what I seen, there was, I, I'll, I'll say, I, I, I don't believe that it was quite followed right where the fence is at. It looked to me like you were off whatever, four or five inches. And I'll just say that. And as far as proof goes, I don't have a picture of the paint. I don't know if you do or if your fencer does either. So where the proof lies, I, I don't know. So for that and that reason is why I'm asking the fair board to be fair to the citizens of Hermosa and Hermosa will be fair to you.
Just, can I get some clarification?
Yes, sir.
You said the entire bill was seven hundred and twenty dollars?
Seven hundred and twenty dollars.
So you were asking for three hundred and sixty dollars from the board?
That is correct, yes. Jerry?
What about the nineteen hundred dollars if they had the cambering come down when they knew it was plugged? And they had, they came down and did that? That's part of that household?
It, it is part of that, but, but I, I, in my opinion, it is something that needed to be done anyway. And, and I'm, I, as far as the president of this board, am willing to take that price on and I hope that the board follows my suggestions. Those things need to be done, part of maintenance. And I just feel like it's, it's done and will, and it will be done again, correct? Chuck?
Well, one of the things, I mean, the seven hundred dollars is so ridiculously cheap for something that would be done like that. I mean, it just, and happened on a holiday. You know, so I mean, by having friends in both places, I got rapid city to come down and jump through there and got it open. So then in the cambering is when we discovered that the post was rolled, rolled into the eight inch line. So I don't think there was any absolute positive spot where that fence has to be. It'd been a foot to the north, it never hit. Sewer mains do not have locator wires on, line of sight from map hole to map hole. So to be able to, and what happened was, you know, it was line of sight and it's marched on the ground. However, you know, let's steer pasturing in there and one thing or other, I don't know if they, the particular blades that have the green paint on them or what, but there's still markings on the lids. You know, and the lids been pulled several times because when you mark a lid, you show the flow on top of the lid with an arrow. It's very unpleasancy. I mean, you would have thought if the guy installed the fence, the light would have come on a little bit. But it was kind of a organized situation where they went in, had a certain amount of time to get it done, so they lined it up and pushed pipes in the ground and away they went.
And nobody did it on purpose? Absolutely not.
And we didn't put the fence exactly where we wanted it because we stayed eighteen inches outside of our marks.
So have you contacted your friend, the fencer? Maybe he has liability insurance?
I thought probably the person that eight one one might have had liability insurance too, but no, it was the roping pub who did it.
No. Mark?
Just so I understand, it was marked?
Yes.
Yes.
And you stayed eighteen inches away from it?
Yeah, the only place we were close to even the eighteen inches marks was down by the trees by the ball field path. The end where we hit the sewer pipe, they weren't even close to the marks.
They shouldn't be liable for it at all.
I, I just have to agree that, that's, if it was marked and they stayed where they were supposed to be, there was when it was marked.
I don't, I don't, I do not see the marks. I did not see it when I was down there, other than on the lid still. Jerry?
To go along with what they're saying is that they were away from it and had to, there is a responsibility to mark it straight and make sure it's marked right. I've done a lot of construction around here, a lot of stuff. I was off the base for twenty-some years where we have critical things you had to miss. You marked it, if you were eighteen inches away and you hit it, it was on the liability of the person who did the marking. We did a lot of our stuff with Jim's locate, actually when Jim owned it. And when he made a mistake, his insurance paid. One time that happened, it was probably two to three thousand locates. So where I see this going to is that the lines were painted, they stayed away from them, and then the person who put the, did the locate is responsible not only for that six hundred and some dollar bill, but also for the nineteen hundred dollar bill.
Thank you, Jerry. Anything else? So we're on claims. I need a mo, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on any of the other claims? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. That brings us to lawn courts, but... We don't have any logs from Custer County.
You see in the marshal, sheriff department around the lot.
Good.
There's lots of time school got out when I seen the lawn curbs.
Abatements. We did go around town and, and made a list of very few, very few things needed to be done. Part of it was some town right of ways needed to be moved or mowed and whatnot, may have been most of them. And I think there was one or two homes is all. As far as Connie's letters go, Connie, I'm under the understanding that you had Cal over to your place the other day?
Sunday.
And Cal did faint smell, I think you said. What, what direction was wind blowing from them or was there any wind whatsoever?
There was a little breeze blowing from the east at that time when I got to her house. She said that it was worse before I'd gotten there. But I did notice, as I was leaving and I drove east on, was that Manning?
Yeah.
East on Manning, take a right on, down there towards Whitney. I could smell something a lot stronger down in that area at that time. So I think it's important to kinda keep track of where we're finding these things and when that's going on and it'll help us figure out where the likely source could be.
Anthony?
Yes.
Are you looking into purchasing a, a smoke tester for us?
Yes.
And what information do you have for me on that?
So if you wanna buy the smoke testing equipment, we can get a price if you bring that to the board.
We need to know the price, yeah. This is something that we might, maybe should just have on hand if it's not, you know, hugely...
No, it's not.
Not, not that.
It's in the hundreds of dollars.
Hundreds of dollars, not thousands. Okay. If you would please check into that and bring this back, thank you. So we'll be getting that information as soon as possible and getting that equipment as soon as possible so that test can be done. I don't know if you've had any problems with anybody on your property lately. I will say this, that you are connected to city water and city sewer. That does give the right to city water and sewer maintenance people to be on your property. However, without permission, they can come to the clean out to the main. Not into my dog's yard, not into my carport, no. Not according to South Dakota Public Commission. They, it's, they cannot. It's a simple phone call, courtesy phone call. If you're gonna come work on somebody's property, you should okay that. But when you have already informed the town about the problem and they're just trying to do their job, I want to be home when they're working on anything at my house. It's that simple. Ken?
Yes?
Your opinion on this, sir?
The fact that you reported a sewer gas smell and some inherent dangers in that, I suppose, certainly is unpleasant. The easements to repair, maintain a utility line or, they vary, but often at least eight feet on each side of the line or of the property. You're saying that they can in... You're saying that they can in to your yard, into your carport and areas that had nothing to do with...
Correct.
...line.
Correct.
And it was not your intent for them to come, you weren't inviting them to come and check it out? I think that's where the clarification breaks down. I think when, what?
The thing is, the sewer gas isn't coming up through drains. It's coming in the window in the breeze, it's in the neighborhood. It's not under my house, it's, we've got some major sewer issues on Manning Street. Two major, seven people total are having sewer issues. I don't know why they're, everybody's bombarding me that it's my house that's causing the problem, it's not. If we smoke the lines, I think we can figure out where all the breaks and cracks and whatever are at. If they want to work on something, just call me, that's all I'm asking.
And I, I think that's not unfair of you to expect that, and I don't disagree with you with that. However, when you also, from the town side, if your, if town personnel's been notified of sewer gas, natural gas, whatever the odor is, there's process of elimination of a lot of times to figure out what exactly can be an issue. And if you're noticing it, and I don't know how many people else have reported that on that street.
Well, they're not reporting it, that's the problem. We've got two documented problems, major problems that are both right across the street from me. Nobody's dealing with those problems, why is that? I don't get it.
So, well, going back to the process of elimination, I figure out, okay, what the heck's causing this thing?
That's the two big ones.
And I think one of the, one of the things always that we want to check would be the venting. And so that would require them to get rid of it and maybe do some things that are, make sure your vents not clogged, those kind of things.
I've got two professionals that handed it up to code.
Yeah, for, for how you, you know, we'd just be guessing unless you respect.
All right, Jerry?
Yeah, well, one of the things with sewer, you know, it should be a closed system the best possible. You get an older system and it's not. But when you have two documented disconnects at where the, where the lateral comes into the main, so the water, and the purpose of that is so that you can flush your toilet, it gets to the main, and it goes to the lagoon. What you don't want to do is have sewer setting somewhere. You set somewhere, it goes septic, you get all the anaerobic, anaerobic, yeah, anaerobic breakdown. That's when you get all the smells. And what happens when you have, and I've done a lot of sewer repair out on the base, millions and millions of dollars worth of it. And where you have a lateral coming into your main where it's busted and disconnected, what you do is you get a washout there, and then you get sewer that stands there. When that sewer stands there, that's when it becomes more septic, that's when it smells more. And then it comes up through the manholes, it comes up through, and if someone did have water in their traps, it could potentially come through the traps. But I think we need to go back and the smoke testing will do it. But there are two known places in there where Camry's gone, where it's disconnected. We pretty much know where the sources are.
Two and a half years that sewer's been leaking right across the road from me. Two and a half years. That's a lot of sewage sitting right there, so. Right across from my bedroom window where it blows in, so. We looked at the pictures and I invited you up to look at them too, you had one. I can read the report, it was all kinds of problems on Manning Street on the report. And I did, I did call you or text you and answer you and you did not, but we did look at it also. And we, we know there are some issues and we're gonna be doing the smoke test and, and things will be getting done. Mark?
Yeah, I just, it's actually kind of, kind of, do you smell like coming up the street or down the street?
I've talked to, I've talked to a lot of people to the west of me, to the west of Linda, nobody up there really smells.
Okay, 'cause I have new construction with an uncapped line. So there, I've never noticed it, but I suppose if the circumstances were right, it could blow that way. But nobody has mentioned that it was coming from up in that direction, and I'll throw a cap on mine, just...
I think a lot of it's laundry purposes on the weekends, and there's a lot of extra usage on the weekend, and I'm downhill. And seven of us on the block is a lot of people with sewer gas issues. I heard you had some problems hooking up to your city sewer.
Yeah, yeah, we did.
So, excuse me. Crumbling lines. Connie, we need documents of every day, every time, every date, the date and time when you smell it. If you would please keep those records for us, we'd appreciate that. If you want anybody to come over, call me, call Cal, you know, call Aaron, we'll come verify. And when we... The last time was so bad, the turkey vaulters were circling, and I've got pictures of them, let me see that. That's how bad. Anthony, yes?
Just, uh, does she, you have a...
Yes.
So, that's good, that makes the cost of the equipment less.
Less.
In the ballpark that I'm thinking about centering.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Donna.
Well, I guess, you know, if the smell's coming in the house, first thing I would do is shut the fucking windows.
Excuse me, that was on the call for.
Right, so, why doesn't she shut her windows?
Well, that's her business, not yours. I'm sorry, that's enough. You want to talk, you wonder why people are going around saying you deserve, you need to apologize to people. That's horrible thing to say. All right, let's move forward to abatement, or to legal, Ken?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, ma'am, Chair. To the finance officer's question, yes, just to reaffirm, does need to be, a resolution does need to be published in its entirety and in the minutes, and it can either be published when it's published in the paper, either as part of the minutes in its entirety or separately in its entirety. And then it becomes effective twenty days after publication. There's any, any question there? And one thing I was gonna, I'm glad the engineer's still here. Is there anything that you would determine that we make this an emergency scenario in purchasing and getting that set up before winter, or?
Yeah, so last winter, we had to pump and haul the lagoons to Houghtons at a exorbitant cost to the town. So, I believe it was in the ballpark of like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it would be a real shame to spend that kind of money again this winter, and that can be used on infrastructure that we can have for decades.
Well, and that...
We run out of time, Mark, until Thursday first.
My recollection too is that the E coli and other testing was off the charts.
Yeah, part of that's to do with the fact that the lagoons are undersized, so yeah.
That's, getting this wastewater treatment plant should solve more issues, right?
Oh, yeah, wastewater treatment plant not only addresses, well, E coli is disinfected at the end of the treatment plant. That's the least of it. You also are removing ammonia and FOD. So there's a lot of, a lot of the limits that are required for discharge are taken care of in the treatment.
So I, the reason I bring that up is if, if, if twenty days from the date of when this thing gets published, when it hits the paper and circulates, you would deem that to be getting close to being a danger to the health, safety, and welfare of the town because it could result in delay because of weather, because of whatever, who knows? It's not reasonable to perhaps pass the resolution on an emergency basis, which would, then you forego having to wait the twenty days from the date of publication to become effective immediately. Whether things will be ready to do, to move within that twenty period or not is up to you guys. I'm not sure about that schedule. But that's something you may want to consider if there's that danger slash issue.
So that being said, you should probably publish that separately and make sure it's automatically in tomorrow. And, well, it won't be in, no, I mean, to, to J C, to get the company tomorrow to make sure that it is definitely in next week's paper.
And we used to add at the end, this shall become legal upon publication, immediately, time publication.
If you state the reason why, and the statute, yes, does permit that.
Can we just make a motion to add that?
That's what I was just gonna suggest, so, they don't even need me here.
Motion made.
Do I have a second to that motion? I'll second that?
And the motion, and the E motion, and the motion, second and motion.
So what do we...
At the very end of the resolution, there's just a statement that says, this resolution shall become legal upon publication.
But before that, the town board of trustees hereby invokes emergency clause determining it is in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the community that this be effective immediately upon publication.
Emergency clause for the health, safety, and welfare of the community.
We got first and second. All those in here?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, thank you, thank you both. All right, so that goes to your, the rest of your business, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. The other thing that you have in front of you is an opinion letter with regard to the purchase of the wastewater treatment plant. It is, it qualifies under the exception to the procurement laws that will require a bid process. And this goes into a bit of detail with regard to that, of course, but what you have here is my unsigned version, but I did want to have a little bit of discussion tonight. And I can also add in there that it was a regimentation of the city engineer, of the town engineer, that this be done as soon as possible for, again, health, safety, and welfare of the community. So I can add that to it, and I might give a little bit more, if anybody would ever come by or come back on it and say, you deprived me of that twenty day referendum period, I would have objected because I don't think back, so. So I can add that to it, but otherwise, in, in talking with Anthony last Friday, Thursday, Friday, we did discuss, you know, timing this, of course, but I believe this letter is a drop dead time, it's by the end of the month, but you need, obviously it's as possible, and it's pretty much done. I might go ahead and add something by emergency.
Only because they've already gone forward with the resolutions to purchase it and put it down payment on it. So you really want to, you close all those, loosen it.
So that's, that's what that is, and read it at your leisure. And anything else you think is something that should bring up in it, I'd be more happy to make that change post-adjournment. Let's see. Yeah, legal, be request the town attorney to resolve TIF one and create TIF two with schedule. Now, the TIF one is, it's, yes, it's standard knowledge.
Thanks, Anthony.
Looking around over it, trying to talk. There are two things that create determination of tax increment finance district. That is expiration of time, being twenty years from the date of creation of the district, or full funding of the project plan for which it was intended. Now, that's the big question here, and in going back, looking at these amendments, I haven't, I admit I haven't had a lot of time to look at it. But there are some references, even in the amendments, of course, that reference back to the original one done in oh seven, that this will not affect any provisions of the project plan other than as otherwise amended in the amendment, changed in the amendment. So what options are available, in my opinion, to this board are that if there are other things identified in the project plan where the funds that are currently accumulated can be utilized in furtherance of that project plan, you're well within your rights to do that. And you're well within your rights for the next, for the remainder of the time of it, until it expires. So that's a question I want to explore, and I'll have an answer for you way before our next meeting. I'll get, there's some discussion, I imagine, that, you know, it's one of those things, there's a fair amount of money being held in the reserves, I recall, isn't there, Terry?
Two hundred and thirteen thousand.
Two hundred and thirteen thousand.
Somewhere in that, that goes, yeah.
Yeah. So, again, it's commonly held, and I don't disagree generally, which I hate words commonly and generally because it reflects specificity, and meaningful detail. It's commonly held that, again, expires or it's paid off. You could say that, well, we achieved our, achieved our goal and by having it be the mechanism that backs the loan and bonds that were set forth for the original purpose. But that was only, if I recall, it was only one of the deals. That was only one of the things we used it for, and that was subsequent to what was outlined originally, okay? Or set forth in the project, original project plan. The D and R thing and the, and the grants and stuff, it was the first time that a TIF, tax number finance district mechanism had been used as security for a loan in the history of the state. So we're a little groundbreaking that way, and it worked fine, it worked well, quite well. So here we are with the, with a, I think, a good problem to have, is making determination whether or not there's other things identified in the project plan that this money should be used for. If not, then we turn the money back to the county. And it goes back to the, to the agencies that have not received it due to the TIF district. Totally up to the board. It's, that's a fair amount of money for a town this size, and there are probably a few things that are contemplated in that TIF project plan that could be utilized. Now, with assets, up to the, there's no time with, under which you can, you have to make an amendment to the plan. You can amend that plan a month before it expires, okay? So you can, you can pass an amendment. Now, if you, if you do that, it can reset your base tax increment, but it doesn't matter because it's only a month or six months before it expires anyhow. But if there was something, there was an identified project that might want to be addressed, it's, it's a, at this time, I haven't sent anything to the contrar, it's my opinion that this board can amend the project plan to this day and fund something that was important to the city.
Even though it's been paid off?
Only, only, only one of the items, or only an item, which was the D and R, in our loans at the time for the water and sewer project, that's been paid off. But what I'm saying is that I don't think is the only thing that was identified in those project plans. And the amendment amended the original TIF documents, including the project plan, which set out all the projects. But that amendment also specifically says that all the other aspects of the project plan, not, you know, that are not contrary that's set forth here, shall remain in full force and effect. So there, if there are other things that, that's on a narrow, there are other things that were contemplated under the original project plan, then no, it's not paid up. It's not paid off for the purpose and intent of the original project plan outlined. So where do I find the list of amendments? Because everybody up...
Because everybody I've talked to says you don't amend it.
You can, you don't typically want to, because it resets your, it resets your base, so when you, when the town formed a district and that base is a hay field, and it's nice and low, and over a few years that grew up into houses or commercial, whatever, now that value, that tax, or the taxes that came, come off that are up here, not where that basis. So that entire growth goes to the project. But if you amend a project plan, it resets, you can do it, but it resets that base up to the day you amended it, so you screw yourself out of that growth.
I understand, so you amended it and you've reset it, and I guess what I'm getting at is what projects have been amended or are still legal to be done on them legals?
Correct, that's exactly my question I need to flesh out more, because I remember, I helped write the original one, it's not, I don't know, I helped write the original one, and there were things in there that were contemplated above and beyond, and different from the, the most recent amendment that implemented the, to use as a security for the DNR loan. So it's done that purpose, and that was, that became its, its, perhaps not its sole purpose, but certainly its top purpose is to be used back that, that, maybe use as a security for the DNR loan.
So, go ahead.
Well, I, it, and the reason, a little bit of backstory, another reason we did it, and is, is originally was with Custer County Housing.
As you're just gonna say, I mean, so obviously, I mean, not just DNR, but I mean, Custer County Housing, I mean, that was a high priority. I mean, they'd done the same thing Preston's did, stacked pipe, got ready to go, nothing passed, or nothing went on. Whatever, whatever that mess was, but it's due to these legals, so the boxed-in legals that this TIF is setting on, what project remains left to be done, or can be done? That's where I'm at, so.
Exactly the issue.
So I mean, other than making a big convoluted gray deal, why can't we just for one time do something that is black and white and just be done? Because I have talked to Bruce, Wendy, the state's attorney, the commissioners, taxpayers, I have run down, I don't know how many rabbit holes, trying to make sure that this doesn't just get, like, things seem to happen so well, not just in town, but in the county, and in the state, and in the world.
Travis, I'm gonna tell you right off, we, we are moving forward with the water sewer projects, and, and that is also with growth, and.
But it's not, all of that is not within the legals window.
Hang on, and we want this to have a defined answer or be done with it too. And so I will give you my word and this board's word that we will know by the next meeting, and we will either dissolve it, or we will have the answer that is you are looking for, and not just you, we are looking for it too.
I was told I was gonna have that tonight.
Well, I'm sorry, you were, but it didn't get done, Kent has been very busy, I cannot control my attorney's timeframe, sorry.
Yeah, I'll take the bull on that.
No, I, I understand, but it just seems like, so now I've got two meetings in, I've missed a night with my family two times, and I'm just a taxpayer. And I get it, so I will come one more time and sit here through.
If we have.
Four hours of whatever it is, one more meeting.
If I have an answer before that, I will call you, and then you will not have to be here unless you choose.
I will choose to be here, because I assume to look in the eyes.
Okay, very good.
It's way easier to say no on a phone than it is to sit right here and think that this is the wrong thing, you guys could move forward easy enough tonight, dissolve it, be done, pay the entities that it involves, and start over with a new one as it looks like you are wanting to do as a board for your new project.
Yes, exactly.
And that's my personal feeling.
Okay, Jerry?
And I won't go through and repeat the same thing he said, because that's what my feelings are, but the question I do have is, okay, you need to go back, what project is it, how is it defined, and then can that even be done before the expiration date? Because the expiration date, it's either when it's paid off or the expiration date, 20 years. You don't, when you modify it, you don't add on to those years.
No, you don't, that's correct.
So they're 20 years, so are we really even, you know, we're, we're looking at the first part of next year.
We're looking within six months.
Within six months, is there really a project out there that hasn't even been looked at for 15 or 20 years from when you wrote it? That's out there that could be ready to go out for bid, especially when you talk sewer or water that has to go to the state for getting approval? Why don't we just do what's supposed to be done, and what's in the laws? And I talked to them up there, and they said you can't amend, there's two times, you can't amend it at two, at two points, you can't amend it after it expires, and I was told by April and, no, Wendy at the state and another person at the state, is, once it's paid off, it's paid off, and it's done, and you can't amend after that.
You're exactly right, my point is that what is provided for, or may be provided for in the project plan, totally different than what the DNR thing was for, right? That still has been identified and exists. Now, dare I go here, I'm very curious about, but in my opinion, at this time, you can amend it till it expires. You're right, after as far as you're done, but.
The definition by the ordinance says it expires, or by the codified laws at the state, it says at this point in time.
Absolutely, expires in 20 years from the.
Or when it's paid, when the, when the, when the money that was borrowed was paid.
When, when the project, when the, when the projects that are identified in the project plan are paid, okay? Now, you can re-identify or create additional projects to be in the plan, that's, that's called the amendment, before expiration. Now, I'll call the A G's office on this and make sure I'm not all wet, but I don't think I am, I've studied these things intensely. And you can do pretty cool things with them, like get a new cop car if you want, or whatever. There are things that are, are quite broad on the use of TIF funds. So I don't want this community to miss out on an opportunity to utilize a couple hundred thousand dollars for improvement or whatever, you know.
As long as it doesn't go towards something that wasn't already in it, or something that was already removed in the past.
It can though, as my opinion, it, it can.
And then why, when I went to those organizations and asked if it could be amended, and I actually got a letter from you telling me that it couldn't be amended?
Okay, we're gonna drop.
Oh, I do, I have a copy of the letter from you.
Well, that's fine, but we're still gonna drop.
Did you send me that though?
Yeah, it's an email you sent.
Okay.
So, Dan, you've had your hand up for a while, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and it's a matter where the first amendment, of course, with Custer County Housing was, they didn't feel we had enough participation in the project, and that's when we did the sewer line on an emergency basis from LaZiar to go down to our lagoon and set the situation up from there. That was one of our first changes to the whole project plan. Then the next situation is that the project plan isn't dead yet. If somebody still comes in to carry chills and wants to put infrastructure, and they can draw on that money until this is dead and the water on this TIF. So anybody that's still within them boundaries of that TIF are able to still draw off of that monies and still able to move forward with it, if there's a water main that wants to be put in, which there's already been approval with the A N R for water main to be run over there, as well as the infrastructure for 13 miles, already in place. So if that were to happen, them monies could be drawn and used for that project plan. Them are the type of clients that are still in effect, that's still able to use it, even though that land is for sale, if somebody bought it, they would be able to use it because it was in the original TIF plan.
Yes, and the only other limitation, you're, you're correct, in my opinion, but the only other limitation is that the dollar amount identified in the project plan was exceeded. That's also another reason for amendment, you can move that dollar amount up, but that, again, will excuse you on your, on your, your base, your increment base, but again, you don't, that's not really an issue on this one, because there's, once there's a short time left on it. So I think there's some opportunities here that the town should examine in order to have proper stewardship of this money for the town.
So was that money used for the bridge?
Yes, it was.
Okay, because that was another amendment.
Yes.
And that's where them situations, when we did that resolution on that, were them circumstances. So when them circumstances are occurring, that is still involvement, still activity, and why it still hasn't been terminated.
Thank you, Dan.
Travis, one more time.
Yep, okay, so if we're looking at 213,000, school, give or take, 130, 40, fire department, I'm sure they, Dane sure used it, 20, 30,000, and you guys are looking at 60-some thousand. I mean, I realize, push come to shove, and if you rallied the troops, all the taxpayers, we'd have to come at you to class action. And I'm not saying that we are, but if we did, you guys are the only ones to stand to lose up until you pay you 60-some thousand dollars, but you get nothing out of this. Rest of us already got nothing, you guys have got 213,000.
I'm quite sure I followed that, but, fair enough.
Right now, it's in your pocket, it's in your guys' pocket right now.
Right now, it is in my pocket.
And I'd have to rally the troops, if you guys somehow or another swept it under, somebody'd have to rally the troops and come after it, and you guys still got our money. I'm just asking, you got six months to do it, how long's that plan been in the works, Dan? Quite a while, nobody's pulled the trigger on it yet.
Till expiration, it's still forward.
You're right, but nobody's pulled the trigger.
Thank you, we're gonna finish this discussion, thank you all for your thoughts, and I do understand that, that the money would go up back to the people, and I get that, Travis, I do, and I want answers to it too. And we will be moving forward as quickly as possible with this, thank you. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I'm with the Battle Creek Fire District, and so I had a few of the questions, just like Travis did, so where can I get this information then, when it comes out? Or are you guys sending it out somewhere, or?
You mean our decisions, when we have to?
No, I was gonna ask about the plan.
If you give Terry your phone number, your number, we'll, we will call you with that, okay?
Alright, thanks.
Yeah, you bet. Jerry?
And also, the citizens, if you're gonna give that information out before the next meeting, it needs to be given out to all the citizens.
It will be on the website, so, okay?
It'll be in the meeting, it's after the next meeting, whether it's all or it's not.
Alright.
Madam Chair, if you'd like to direct me to direct a memo with regard to this issue at all?
I, I would love for you to research that and, and get that information to us as ASAP.
Specific to the disposition of tax increment, remaining tax increment district files.
Yep, and what, exactly what it could be used for, and blah, blah, blah. Anthony, you, I, you are in need of a TIF, correct, for, for what we are doing with the, with our water and sewer projects, we very possibly may be wanting a new TIF for that area, that is correct?
Um, I'm, I'm not.
Not you, I don't mean to drag that to you, that's right.
Put it directly in the way I understand increment districts are, to be put together. So, so that the current one has, you know, it's, it's had a plan, it had, I guess, feet to it when, when it was put together, it obviously was, was a larger area than kind of what's plotted. So when I look at, I'm looking at it from an engineer's standpoint, so I'm looking at the, the property owners, and if they have a plan or not. So if, if they plotted it, like Dan's situation where he has a lot of plotted lots, roads, things like that, from the town's perspective, we'd like to see the roads, we'd like to see that proceed, you know, the roads to be dedicated to the town, the lots are, you could purchase them individually, that, that infrastructure would get put into place, because those are users on our system, so then everybody's costs overall, individually, would then, would then be absorbed by a larger user base, right? That, that's the, the town's, in the town's interest to have that done. Now, how that's done is, is not really, it's inconsequential, right? If it's done the way that amendment, if, if that is possible or not, then that'd be fine. If it's done by dissolving it and creating a new one with a new plan and with new prices, because the, the prices 20 years ago are not the prices of today, right? So, so there's quite a bit of that. And then obviously, there's other areas of the town where they wanna, they wanna take advantage of that same mechanism. And so that, that kind of, those all, if, if you go to Boxell, they'll, they'll say that there's TIF fatigue, because there's too many requests, right? So the developers are all vying for the time of the, of the town to do that, we don't have that, that situation, right? But we, we do have to kind of do them, it takes time, right, it takes time, it costs money.
You can have a cake and eat it too, so to speak, on this kind of matter, because we can start, we can, we can, we can create a new TIF district, and it can overlay onto the existing one without having to dissolve the existing one. We call it an overlay, it happens, it's very, it's, the only thing is that the new TIF district doesn't get funded until the old one expires or, or dies a natural death, because it's, projects, just one of those kind of things.
Or expires, yeah.
So, yeah, so you can, you can go ahead, if you want, and start a new, and identify a new district. Now, you can even identify a district without a plan being in place, because it's three separate processes. You can, you have a district stating the general intent of what you intend to do, but your project plan doesn't need to be finished for another five years. So get the district formed, I agree with that, because then you stop your base, you set that base, and you can capture more growth.
Jerry?
Yes, to go back and look at your town ordinances, plats, you know, the engineer just mentioned, while Dan's stuff is ready, it's platted. But if you go back and look at the definition of when a plat can become final, it's very clear in the first paragraph, first couple paragraphs, it says, if that plat has water, sewer, roads, or anything in that plat, that that cannot be final plat until that is accomplished or until 130% of the money is put up front, that is in your ordinance. So the, the plat that's out there, on that property out there, is not a final plat, because that did not happen. So that would have to start over again.
Okay, we'll, we'll research that to you, thank you.
I'm not telling you, that's the truth, that's what it says.
I said, we will research it, we will.
That is the truth, if you read it.
Yeah.
Don't, don't be glaring at me.
I'm not glaring at you.
Okay.
I was glaring.
Moving forward, the public works. No, not, no information?
Streets, um, Dan has graciously decided that he would do the streets for nothing. So there is 60 ton of gravel that's placed out by the dumpsters, and there is a request at Simon's for tack oil to be able to mix with some of that for patching holes and stabilizing, whatever. So on to street lights, the one that's down below here, we do have a new one, and they've been called, and I don't know exactly when they're gonna fix them, but they, they're on the, we're on the list, so to speak. Water situation, I don't really have anything that's changed along the way, I've talked to mid-convent to see if there's anything that's in the works, and there is not, or quarterlies or yearly's or whatever, there probably will be, from end of the year, there'll probably be some test who will probably have to be run. On the sewer side, we've already went through back forth, over, upside down on what happened on Fairground Place. We've been working this lagoon pretty steadily, while I'm trying to get the issues straightened around there, Anthony's been there a couple times, and so has Cal, and my agents have been connected and. And the maintenance has been connected and done, and the very south end has been cleaned out. I want to meet with Anthony down there. I think we're gonna have to do some repress or something in there to kind of stabilize it. So it's very sandy, and I believe it'll wash out very easily, so we need to retard that in some way, shape, or form. I had talked to Greg. In the process of land applying and that stuff, they don't seem to think there's a problem with applying with crops that's up a foot high. So we have to get the discharge pipe back, so we can physically connect from that source to the other end, and that's, we're attempting to get the power across. Moving on, I mean. So, um, we did have pump number one go down and Ferguson subdivision again. And you were there and looked. Same thing, different day. So I don't know what we're gonna do to stop that, but. Anyway, I think that's all I got. The work, the work order is to power normal as we can.
Thank you.
If Anthony comes up with a smoke machine, I will work that in somewhere and get it done.
Okay, thank you. I see Chuck's, or Dan's hand up.
So does that mean then we'll be going to Ferguson Development again for the same circumstance to try to resolve it?
Well, I guess that's up to them.
And then will we be sending letters to them explaining why? Is that? I've been asking if it did happen that way the last time we built them, and they got a letter explaining why they had to extra billing?
There goes, uh, it does have to be a board decision, but I would entertain a motion to charge it to Ferguson Development, the bill for that. And I, I think that another door hammer, another letter to each of them in that area, explaining why, you know, that this is happening, and to please be more careful, it's, you know, it's, it, it's the dollars, you know, out of all their pockets. It's a sad situation, but yes, man.
Wasn't that a standing motion we made before, though, that any time this occurred in Ferguson Development?
As I recall, it was a standing motion, yes.
Yeah, any time, it was automatic.
But that does not mean that they should not be all given another letter of explanation.
Yeah, thank you.
Weren't we already going to contact the B and B?
And it was.
I already did.
It has been done.
And. They're gonna put up a sign or?
They, she has put signs up, and I know, I picked the girdges up, so I know what was in it. Because two of her bags had fell out, and I went over and picked them up. And I had talked to her, and she said, "I have signs up inside my house," or inside the house. So that's, yeah, what else can you do? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
And like I said, I, the time comes to take a letter of mine.
Okay.
I've said it received that several times, if you take a letter of mine.
And is there a homeowner resource station with us over there now?
No. Anthony?
Just two things on that. So the one thing was, so that's the Ferguson lift station, it's having issues with debris and everything coming in.
Baby wipes, generally speaking?
So, um, this is something that's pretty common in South Dakota. We don't have that, because we usually build a sump in the, in the pump station, but they have trash baskets that can be added to the pipes coming into that station. And so that way, then, it's just a maintenance of the trash basket.
And how often does a trash basket have to be dealt with?
The more people dump in, the faster it fills up, and the more you'll have to maintain it, but.
And how much is a trash basket?
Oh, they're probably the little metal baskets that hang on the, on the end or.
Oh, they're not.
They're probably not expensive. I've never actually seen them. They haven't probably used in thirty years, I assume.
Probably have to be checked weekly or something, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's something to try, at least that it's an inexpensive thing. Because we're talking about that, I was talking about that with the V A and R reviewers, and that came up because of the pumps and not having grinder pumps or having grinder pumps and things that they were implementing because of old, old infrastructure. Um, the other thing is, is, it's an unrelated topic, but the wastewater treatment plant, it would be nice to know what it would cost for us to run some kind of water service to it. Having water at the, at the new wastewater treatment plant would allow us to more effectively flush and restart a clarifier and do things like that. I'd like to know what that would cost, you know, for, for us to have a line run there.
Put that together.
Yeah.
Thank you. And I guess, check out how much the baskets cost and what, what that would entail, please. Okay?
The line that you're talking about, I have talked to a joint landowner, and he didn't, isn't gonna have a problem with just going across.
Going across his, oh, good. Wonderful.
There is existing curb stops that we can tie into, go across, so it'll be a material and difficult situation.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Dan?
I know with our mom system, when we did our shop, when we looked into the basket situation, too, the long kind of paper can also add in if they're using wipes to fill that up quicker.
How much do you have to put my hand up?
To a point on that situation, too.
It's like paper shitting.
You're just, you're just gonna have to check it every other day until you figure out what the flow is. I mean, you can't control over what they're putting down there, obviously. So, you know, two or three days may be heavier than a week, the next week, so you don't know. I mean, obviously, we can't potty train them, so we're gonna have to put another diaper on them, I guess.
Thank you.
Yeah, if the, the baskets don't work, then you could, you'd have to get down there, back that, and put a sonnet tube in, and pour one foot sump, and let those pumps sit a foot up off of the floor. So now you could, now you, you got that foot to, to work with before you got back.
Good, thank you. Jerry?
I guess I understand the, the leak down there in the sewer, I guess some citizen seen it coming up out of a manhole, and you knew it was backed up?
I knew, because I got phones off.
But my question is, how did, how did someone who called you find out about it? I understand that there was a citizen that was riding around in this four wheeler that seen stuff coming out of the manhole.
Oh, you?
No.
Oh, oh, okay.
How?
Oh, yours was in a four wheeler.
How, how did you guys find out about that?
Yeah.
Matt Steen was crossing there and called me, and went over there immediately and looked at it, and called Rapid Rude.
Yes, but did he see, was it, he seen it? He didn't pull the manhole cover? He seen what was coming out of, over the ground?
No, he seen the liquid that was coming out of the pit hole.
It was coming out of the pit hole, okay.
Yeah, there was no solid to get out of there, it was just water.
Yeah, but then, then that's considered an overflow, if you go back.
Certainly is, and it's been recorded.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay.
I also something that you, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I'm hanging out, so I'll, I'll head to that.
Yeah.
Hermosa has never traditionally had an online reporting tool. We never, V A and R never forced it, forced it on us. If there is a deadline, I think in a couple of years, that they're gonna make everybody do it, called Net B M R. So I happened to be at a conference in the last week with Tim Flor from V A and R, who sets those accounts up. So we're set, we got that process started to set up that account, so that within twenty-four hours of a sanitary overflow or something, we can record it. Once it's up in the A and R's website, that's, that's it, they take it from there.
Okay, very good, thank you. Alright. Next. Yes, finance.
So I just, I have some monthly reports there for you, trying some different ones. I've got a trade report that shows the balance into the funds. And then a budget report, kind of showing where we're at with that budget. I did do the bank reconciliation, but I missed getting it in package, so.
So is everything switched from client?
Um, no. So Linda and I will be going to Bank of America tomorrow and pulling the rest of those funds and closing that account. And then moving everything to Bank West, so. Right now, I'm kind of dealing with two banks. Get it all done one. And as far as updates, I did give each of you a form to do the A C H for the payroll, so if I could get those back, I'd like to be able to do the payroll of the this month, A C H, so that we don't write checks.
That, that'd be nice.
Because that was one of the reasons for us going to Bank West. We would have the ability to do that.
Okay, anything else, Terry? Any questions, anybody in the financials that you've got in the packet? What do you look at? Seventy-one percent, huh, is where we're at on the budget? Yes, that's pretty good. Okay. That brings us to old business. Update on, on gravel roads, that's pending. Be the second reading of the budget.
We had this, the last meeting, and then this will be the second meeting, so we'll have to have a, a motion to approve it.
And we have to read just the title. Great? I got, need to put rubber on my fingers or something here. Town of Hermosa, ordinance two point zero seven seven, and ordinance commemorating funds since the year twenty twenty-five. Motion to approve. Donna makes the motion, who do we have a second?
One second.
All those in favor? Motion, Terry, thank you. Next, does Hermosa Connect? Who is representing?
Terry has the information there. A year ago, there's a Fuel to Grow, it's a class that's put on by University of the Black Hills, and it's in town here. I think the board actually approved, I think, I think the what, maybe the five of us that went, I think the board approved.
Four went, four went last year.
Four went last year, and then they also funded some from Hermosa Connect. And so what we're looking at is to get funding for three positions this year. It's in October. Terry has all the information on it.
And the, the registration is eight hundred and fifty dollars for participants.
And this would be B B and B money?
Yep.
So they, is it three Hermosa Connect people?
Yes.
That's what we're requesting. And the board, I would recommend, and I thought it was a good, I recommend, I mean, I don't know what some of the board member schedules are like, but it's, it definitely was worthwhile. I mean, I think you attended, no, you did, did not?
No.
Oh, yeah, you and Vicki attended the other one.
It is October seventh through the tenth. And it's at Black Hills State University Rapid City?
By McDonald's. Yeah, by McDonald's.
By McDonald's.
The university, university center.
Yeah, okay.
And it, it was.
The seventh through the tenth? Or eighth or?
But I, it was, it was very beneficial.
Jerry, why do you say?
What's that?
What's it called?
It's Fuel to Grow, it's economic development, and that's one of the things that for this town to really grow, we need to get involved on a level where we can do and look at some of the things.
It's hystified.
Special housing being built.
We'll talk to somebody.
Oh, I see. Alright, Dan?
Now, Joan was the other one that attended that, so I think if she would step up again, that was a.
And when is the deadline for the?
It's eight hundred dollars a person?
Shannon would be an awesome.
So it, it also, it over, over doubled in price since last year?
Yes, and the reason it doubled in price is because the classes longer now, and it's actually accredited now, so you actually get a, a master's degree credit for.
Really?
Yes.
Are you interested in going?
What's that?
Are you interested in going?
You.
Hi, me.
Yeah. Who is, who is planning on attending for the Hermosa Connect?
I think the three people is Ally, she went last year, myself, and Belina.
So how long a class, how long does this?
It's a, it's a five-day class.
Yeah, well, what I mean, how many hours a day?
It's eight hours a day. It's eight to nine hours a day. It's, it's pretty much, it's full ti, it's a full-time.
Starts Monday, the seventh, at twelve P M, the registration goes to five thirty, and then Tuesday starts from seven thirty to five, Wednesday, seven to five, and then Thursday, seven thirty to four.
Wow.
And you do get.
You get all your food, all your meals included with that registration.
Yeah, and a breakfast, and there is college credit that you get from it.
And when is the deadline for registration?
It didn't have, it just said it opened up like in June, and I don't see a deadline. Registration will open on June seventh. But I don't see where, if they're logging. I don't see a, it might be taking them right up.
With there being no deadline on that, I'd like to put this pending until next Tuesday, and let's see who's interested in going, and, um, go through that. Yes, Jerry? Next meeting is October first.
So you're?
October first.
You're pending it for, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we haven't had a meeting on October first, so. Yeah.
I was just wondering, the eight hundred and fifty, that's for as many people wanting to go?
No, that is per person. It's like saying it over, over doubled in price since last year. Three ninety-five or eighty-five last year per, three ninety-five last year per person, eight fifty this year.
And the thing is, it's credited, and it's longer.
It's credited, well, you know, I mean, that isn't gonna do most people any good, you know? I mean, I know it would be a few. I'd like to talk to Joan about that, and do a little more research on it myself, and we'll get back to you then on the first.
If that was all for accreditation, it would be like three credit hours.
Great.
Unless we find out deadline.
Yeah, well, yeah, unless there's a deadline before, then we'll, we'll get it done before that. Okay? Alright, um, that brings us to new business, website design. Trina?
Yeah, let's see if my computer. Hi. Hi. So, um, you know, I was thinking we need, always need good communication, right? I'll squeeze up for here.
Correct.
Let me just go through this sheet that Terry added.
Jerry, please.
Terry added a sheet that didn't get in the packet, and it just mentions the goal of having a new website. I really think that we could reduce the cost, but I'm not gonna promise that. Right now, we pay a thousand dollars a year, which really isn't very much. Plus, we pay about five hundred dollars a year for our legal documents that are housed on a different server with a different company. Anyway, so a new website for better communication, easier to find things. I'll show you, if you wouldn't mind, here in a minute, what I'm proposing. I'm, I've just created two. Uh, I'm, I've just created two pages so far. But I talked to Jill about it, and it seems that updating our current website is very difficult. So that would fix that, and then the new website would make it mobile compatible, so you can see it on your phone. We can also update our SSO, and SSO is the data that is used when people are searching for websites. Right now, if you've never searched for Hermosa and you do it now, you'll get stuff in California. So we need to correct that. And then, um, we have to organize our ordinances. Right now, half of our ordinances are, um, where they should be, where we pay extra for them. And the other half are, um, oh. Okay. Well, I'll leave you here for a minute. Okay. The whole thing here. Excuse me. Half of our ordinances are, uh, where they should be with American Legal, and the other half are on our website, and so we need to update them and put them all in one place. For several reasons. This, um, move. Probably got to stop sharing there. That's all right. This move would also, um, require that we move all of our recordings. I'm recommending YouTube. I checked with the Rapid City, they use YouTube for their meetings and their recordings. Uh, several other municipalities, if I can say that right, uh, use YouTube, so, uh, and it's free.
Would that include all the historical ones?
Right, um, yeah, it's as many as we want to upload, right? So the city would just create an account with them and then start uploading.
Yeah, because it's important not to lose any of the old ones.
Right, and, yeah. I'll just leave that where it is. Let me just show you what I. This is the, um, proposed site. This would be, now again, I used A I to generate this image. I, I've made a lot of my own images, but for, just for the purpose of showing you something, I just used A I. Um, and our current motto is where the Prairie meets the hills. I don't know where we got that motto, but, um, we could really get some community involvement and ask people to create an image and submit a motto, and, um, just kind of make it a fun activity for whoever wants to participate in promoting Hermosa and is artistic. So that's just an idea.
I might have one for you.
Right, right, yeah, so that's what I'm thinking, just kind of give it, people an opportunity to participate in, in that way. Right now, we have, um, I have like resident, Pay My Bill is still there, that takes you to that site. We would create a whole page for the garbage, services, pets, my property, things that, you know, Liberty had questions on today, you know, or Bonnie.
Same as Liberty.
Yeah, same person. Uh, school, uh, right now, I don't know that we're even linked to the school, the library. So if I'm a brand-new resident, I could just come here and see everything that relates to me, what's happening. Would, would have all the news. Government would have staff and board, and, and it'd be nice if we could find a way to put Chuck on there too, since he's Public Works, even though he's contracted, it would be nice to have him with the rest of everybody. And, and then under more, business services and contact, that services is the same one as this one. So again, I used A I to generate, like, the, this is all the same information that we have on our current website, but I just updated the wording and put it under headers, so it's easier to read. This, uh, whoever created our website on the homepage had a ton of information. And, uh, so hopefully that'd make it easier to read. That's, it seems like I was going to show you one other page, resident page, if it comes up. Hermosa residents, so down, we'd have the same image on every page, so it's consistent. Here, you'd have your links, um, and then I was trying to find a place with the scholarship information. We, we have a ton of information on that site, it's just hard to see and find. And according to Jill, it's hard to edit as well, so this would do that. I would volunteer to do the design and creating all those stuff, and then once we were done with all the pages and the design, then I could, um, transfer ownership over to Jill, and then she would manage it. So, right now, she just fills out a form to update the website. So she would have full ownership of it. We could keep our, uh, Hermosa S D dot com, or we could be Town of Hermosa. We could change that as well. Transferring a domain name is not a problem. I've done several websites for different nonprofits, this is my first government website, and so I ran into, oh, what do we do with legal documents? What do we do with, you know, a thousand gig of recordings? We don't want to pay for unlimited data storage. So moving those things off of our domain, our website, our server, our hosting, would save us a lot of money, about fifteen hundred dollars a year, if, if we went with this. Oh, I was going to show you the, um, mobile. No, I don't want to refresh that page. When you open it up, um, on a phone, then this would be how they would see, uh, the residence page. And they'd have the links here, and that's where. So you do have to edit both separately. The web page is based on the size of the device that's accessing it. So, uh, again, it's just to increase communication, make it easier for our residents, make it easier for the office staff, hoping to save some money. The obligation on your side is to commit, um, by the next meeting. You don't have to make any decision, but the reason why I want it to be by the next meeting is because it takes a couple of, well, it could take a month or two months to get it all built, and then you have to transfer your domain name or create a new domain. Domain names are cheap, they're less than fifteen bucks.
What would be the initial cost to start it?
Yeah, um, if we host off of these guys, it's approximately five hundred dollars a year.
Rather than what we're paying now.
You pay a thousand right now. You, oh, and you have some things to say about this.
Well, no, we, we have that contract that we, they just signed that was effective this year. It went from April of twenty-four to March of twenty-five. Now it's a thousand dollars, that was at.
Yeah, and, uh, City of Custer was using that same group catalyst, and they are, um, they've switched to, in part because to go with the mobile options and a newer website is going to cost you more. I didn't talk to anybody specifically at Custer, but they switched to a company called Civic Plus. They're out of Canada, and they do government websites. And they're pretty good.
And are, when you say government, to me, that just means it should be more secure. Yes, no?
Well, you would think, but really, all of your, like, your ordinances are on American Legal. Uh, American Legal Publishing has all of your ordinances, they have special security and all of that. The, the difference is, is that when you focus on government, and I've just been learning this the last two weeks as I've been doing this, most sites are for sale purposes, right? So you're selling a product, right? So they don't have to focus on that. Even this site that I use, I use Wix, as you can see. A lot of their stuff is product-based to sell. So that's why I want to keep us at the five hundred dollar a year line, because, and to do that means moving the recordings to YouTube. Or to another. I know, it's kind of weird to think of.
It is weird.
But, but you'd be surprised, if you go out to YouTube, you'd be surprised how many government and city entities are using it for the same purpose.
Wow.
C-SPAN, that's why C-SPAN. Paid by some videos.
It's something to think about.
I just have one question, and this is, I'm digging here, I think dot, dot gov affects SSO optimization in some way, did you look at all?
Yeah, I, I did look at getting a dot gov. I did not do all of the research on it. It, it looks like we could get a dot gov without having to use a different hosting.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I just, I'm trying to remember, but I think dot gov's, there's an impact on the SSO when you're using a dot gov.
Sure.
It's easier, you don't have to worry about that crime.
Right, right, yeah. Um, and we can do that, we could get a dot gov if you guys want to.
And then we could buy the domain today, and then switch over to it whenever.
Exactly, exactly, you can buy the domain anytime, and domains don't cost anything. What costs, uh, generally, is having somebody design it. The other, uh, part is just keeping it hosted for you.
Did you talk to Nick at all?
Uh, no.
No?
Oh, yeah, and Hermosa Connect has a website, and we don't, we're not connected to them yet, and it makes sense if they're promoting business that we connect to their website and.
Phil, you got a question?
I was just going to say that the Wix platform is fairly user-friendly for the staff of, of in town to work to utilize whoever is going to be operating. I use it at my store, our February just went to a new Wix website. And so I do like her proposal, and I do updating it and making it more user-friendly.
Thank you. Trina, thank you so much for, for doing that work for us, it was very interesting. And how does the office staff feel about it, or do you not, have you not?
I mean, I, Jill and I have looked at it and we thought it's probably a good idea.
Probably a good idea, okay. See, Aaron Chayton has said already. So we need to vote on this change next, if we want to make the change next meeting, or?
I don't know.
I thought I was going to go on vacation wherever that.
I'm placing.
Okay. So, the one that we're paying now at the thousand dollars, that doesn't sound, the name doesn't sound familiar to me. Has this changed from originally?
Yeah, because it was just signed, it was just approved last fall, I believe, and the contract is from, I believe it was April of twenty-four to, or, May or April people next year or something. It goes into twenty twenty-five.
But how long have I been? They, they, the people we had before, like quadrupled or something to our price. And so, was it, um, Monica that did the research and found this one? Am I, does anybody remember?
One idea being, people still put all the links out there for, you know, different stores. It's hard to keep updated when businesses go in, you know, out of business and, and change the whole monologue, front story about available restaurants and this and that.
Right.
There's, you know, a couple of businesses where we can just update the, at one point you get, you know, if they had a website, the link was there to find them, it's right in Connects and, anyway. Businesses.
Okay.
Like Academy, the library, the school.
Well, we'll do more research on that and have that on the next agenda also then. Very good. Thank you so much, Trina.
Thank you.
Very, very nice.
Thank you.
Volunteer. So, all right, um, oh. That brings us to street contract. So that, um, Mr. Halsworth did say at the last meeting. While she's finding this, I, um, my own personal feeling on this matter was that if we had somebody that was. Okay, that was, uh, willing to volunteer to do, um, the work that, with our budget the way it is, it would be a very good idea. And even maybe most importantly, um, Chuck is busy enough with sewer and water, and with the new systems coming, that we need him more available to those situations. And so it was my idea to, um, not give him the street contracts, basically. I, when I talked about, felt and thought about that a lot, I went to Cal and asked him his opinion. He thought maybe that it was also a good idea, and, um, we talked to Dan, we were around with Dan, he gave us a proposal for the streets, uh, what needed to be done and what material would need to be purchased. He, uh, when Cal and I talked, um, I personally don't think it's fair, if he wants to volunteer his time, I'm all for that, I, that's great, volunteer your time. As far as the equipment and the wear and tear on the equipment and the fuel that it takes to run the equipment, I personally believe we should be paying for that. I did suggest the possibility of getting, um, someone else to bid the project or to bid the fixes and see what the, the real price would be for, you know, who, whoever from Rapid City, whatever, you know, road, road crews, to do that work, so that the citizens and the board would know how much we were saving, um, by having a volunteer to do this. Dan, oh, is there, there must be five copies. Dan handed this to me on my way in tonight, I have not read it. Sorry, I'm over there. Double double. Can I read it, Dan, outlaw, is that all right? Yeah, okay. To board members, if I were to bid this at a regular rate on street maintenance, the cost would be doubled. The same for any work I propose to be done on the last, on the last sheet of the proposal. I have worked on the streets for fifteen years at material cost only. I have worked on the streets for 15 years at material costs only, and as always, if something is needed to correct a problem, to make the job right, I do it. As I have and as a donation, I always have and am looking out for the citizens' pocketbooks. Thank you, Dan. Um, you, you have mainly done the roads for a long time and, um, and it's appreciated, I guess.
I suppose.
Hi. I do not have that proposal. Cal, do you? Oh my God. Dan, do you have a copy? I'm sorry. I didn't get a chance to go.
Does Chuck currently have the streets until the end of the year?
No, 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 it's not in the contract at all. I've, I've read the contract. What is in the contract for streets for Chuck is snow removal. Snow removal.
Snow removal.
Jerry, would you make up some copies?
Thank you.
I guess, is this a have-to-do-it-right-now situation?
Well, the streets need work. There's no doubt about it, and they need work before the weather goes bad. And, and still, I, I maintain and still feel and believe that we need Chuck on sewer and water. And with the smoke testing coming and then the new, um, plant coming and that having to be set up and, and running that. And then like emergencies like what happened, um, on Ferguson, he, he needs to be available, and he was, he, he was there right away. And I appreciate that greatly. We need him for those purposes. But the, the streets take time too, and, and they need some time to put on them. And I just think that, um, we need to have that done by somebody else so that Chuck is free to do his main jobs.
So this volunteer is going to enter a community position?
No, he's gonna volunteer his time, as far as I am concerned. This is a board decision. I, what I am saying is that I, if he wants to volunteer his time, I'm all for accepting that volunteer work. But I do believe that he, his fuel and his time and wear and tear, whatever, on the equipment should be paid for. That is my opinion as a board member. It, it will be a board decision, but I'm just telling you how I feel about it. And I told Dan that, uh, right away. Jerry, I'll be with you in just a minute. Board members first, go ahead.
Is there any reason why the finance committee didn't contact the streets committee when you all went for a drive?
I, that was my deal. That was what I called you about. I didn't. Disappointed, I know.
Yeah.
We talked about you. We talked about you and.
You talked about me and you said then. I'm home 24/7. Somebody could have called.
I know.
And wait till a meeting and then spring it on the rest of the board then.
I didn't know about it either, Shannon, so.
Yeah. Mr. on the street committee. What's the point of committee?
At any rate, you see the proposal ahead of you, uh, in front of you here. Well, I think we should table this until next time. I.
Absolutely agree.
And? You all right with tabling it till next time? Did everybody get a chance to look at it?
I think that's fair. I mean, uh, I would maybe would have presented it a little bit differently, but.
Sorry.
No, I mean, I'm just meaning as far as, uh, ahead of the meeting and stuff like that. Huh?
I want to do all that.
We will bring this up at the next meeting. Um, everybody can look at their packet here and, uh, go for a ride. Right, go for a ride. Dan, if you would like to take the others for a drive around town so they can see what you're proposing, um, I would appreciate that very much. Go ahead, Shannon.
Is this something we can do a phone poll on? Is this something we want to?
Uh, you know, we have, we have been told that phone polling is illegal and, and that we should not be doing that, so. Um, and I hate, I hate to, but if need be, we could pull together a quick meeting.
When we lose heat on fixing the streets. Which I guess is why I'm surprised we want kind of kept in the loop. Because we've, we've been waiting on this like three meetings in a row. So to be sprung on it, meeting night when we have the fifth week, just surprises me. And I don't want to lose any extra time either on repairing them. But I was waiting on, even with Chuck, to take me around and show me, so. You know, if it's something that can be approved by phone poll, I don't have a problem with that. I know that if, you know, for the 60 ton to work with and the oil that we already approved to purchase.
I believe, in my opinion there, I think we're gonna have enough roadwork to be done down at the lagoons, um, that, um, and elsewhere that I, I think that if we need more rock, I, I'm, I'm just not concerned about that either because I think we'll be using it anyway with projects coming forward.
And so the approval is actually, so he's, the volunteers covered under our insurance?
All volunteers, all volunteers in the town of Hermosa are covered under our insurance as long as they come up and, and list in the payor, yes.
And then is, so is this, is it the portion of paying him that can remain pending? The portion you felt that he shouldn't be doing it completely for free, at least cover the fuel and which I don't have a problem with, I guess. I just jumped the gum because I was really upset I didn't know about this, and I apologize.
Well, I apologize.
I'm trying to get to the bottom of it, but I still want to get him done. I want to get it done before the snow flies, obviously, but.
Dan?
I don't want to ruin it.
Yeah, and I brought it over to your house, and then I know we said we were gonna get together and give you a call. When you could get free to come over and I would grab you and we'd go. And then I talked to your mom last weekend again and said, hey, if you're free, I'd sure like to drive around.
Mom said she told you, just give me notice, give me a call, give me some notice, and then she asked me yesterday, did Dan ever call? No. Did Chuck ever call? No.
Take you around, show you everything.
Did Linda call back? No.
So, and it was phone tagged several times there where I left messages and stuff. Several weeks ago when we originally brought this, and then, of course, that's when we talked to Linda and Linda wanted to look too. Cal wanted to look, see what the conditions were, what we've done, what had been done, and that's the same thing I want to get you around. And I would like that ability tonight to have a motion that allow me to volunteer because some of the stuff that should have been done all summer long and hasn't been touched, I could play with. I'm not saying of that situation, but I can surely tell you I can go around and properly do is what has been done the last 15 years and address it in a good situation.
Did I hear a motion made?
Yes. Motion made to approve Dan to volunteer to repair or maintenance the streets as he's done previous.
Until next meeting.
He's volunteering and making a motion that I, we allow him to volunteer.
So that, but we still are going with the financial under. A second?
Um, I just have one question.
Go ahead and second it, and then the question can be answered.
I'll second it, um. Yeah, no, definitely, Dan, uh, this is really awesome. But we need to get him if, tonight if we could get him a chunk of this, is that, is there like a chunk that we can give to you, like proof so you can go get started?
If you can, uh, abilities volunteer tonight, I'm gonna start into the worst areas up on Second Street by the school, here on Third Street where that rut from L.A. is and start coming through some of them areas. There's a Fourth Street by the school, potholes. Uh, stuff that needs to be done by UPM and stuff like that that needs to be put in these holes that aren't holding that have ad applications in them are gonna have to wait till the next meeting so we can approve the UPM too. And I'll drive you and Shannon both around and show both of you as the other two have already seen, and that way.
What about me?
Uh, we got three of you, I got a four of them. So if you want to go singly, I'll take you around too.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's good. You mentioned getting everything bid out. I think we really do need to do that so that people will see how much they're getting for. Because that's a lot of work.
A lot of work, yeah.
Jerry?
I agree that, I haven't seen the list yet, but I've seen the list that Dan has done in the past, and it's been very good. I mean, he's done stuff over on the other side of town. All the places done really good. One of the things is, is, you know, he, he's willing to volunteer his time. You bring up something that's important, and I think it is important to, you know, recoup for his machi, use of his machinery. And I think before you can give him a chunk of something and have him go, you need to come to how much you're gonna give him for the use of that machine. And then one place we could go back to that, and I think it should be pretty well even, is go back and look at Chuck's attachment aid to his contract, and it talks about, this is what he gets for a skid steer, this is what he gets for this per hour. And I think that needs to be defined before you give him the chunk.
The, um, you haven't seen the contract, but, um, for the entire rating here, it's 22 hours of labor. $2,750. So is that your fee for the use of your equipment, Dan?
Correct.
So that is for 22 hours. So that's a hundred and thirty dollars an hour?
$1.25.
Twenty-five, whatever.
Yeah, that's higher than what Chuck gets for a 920 cat loader.
So.
Linda, can I say something?
Yes.
I, I mean, we all know the streets are in terrible disrepair and it's not Chuck's fault. He's been busy doing water and sewer and everything. Had a lot of things come on, and so. Yeah, and so, um, you know, we need to get it done and, like they said, get it done before the weather turns and everything like that. And I know he had volunteered his time in the past, but, you know, it was my, uh, opinion also that, that we at least recoup him for machine time because he has wear on his machines, fuels, hydraulic oil, filters, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Same as Chuck.
Yep, and so.
I don't feel that he should be paid any of that.
And so, um, I mean, you know, in regards to Chuck, you know, he doesn't have the street maintenance on his contract. And so he's too busy right now to do it anyway, so we need to have somebody do it like pronto. I mean, it's, maybe you don't notice it, Jerry, you know, I know you got a big truck and everything, you got your, uh, side-by-side and everything, but on my little car, you know, I, I definitely feel those big bumps and everything, so.
Oh, I definitely, I, Dan has done an excellent job, fast, there's no question on that. My only thing is, is if you're paying one contractor so much per hour to use equipment, then it should be kind of compatible.
Different equipment?
Yeah, he said, he said cat loader, right? He said, yeah, it's a lot of diesel.
So the most expensive piece of equipment, um, that Mr. Ferguson has is motor grater blade at 78, no, backhoe at 90, $90 an hour. Backhoe with a 12-inch blade is $90 an hour.
And that's what he gets for, actually for the backhoe and the operator. That's what Chuck gets. So there is a disparity between that if he's, if he's donating his labor. It just needs to be.
Would it be inappropriate to have you get started? When you get through this, bring back your total hours spent, your fuel spent, the oil at your cost so that we can pay you at that time when you're done, or do you want this approved before you get started?
On the volunteer side, you mean?
No.
You can't let him do work until there's a contract if you're paying him.
No, he, that's not true. If, if he's going to volunteer to do this and we make a motion that he can get started, he can rightfully let us know when he's done how much time he has spent, how many gallons of fuel he has used, how much oil he has used. And then we as a board can choose to reimburse him some of that or all of that. I don't need a contract first.
I think, yeah.
And contracts do not need to be comparable to other ones or you wouldn't have sealed bids. Sorry.
How can you get your lawyer on sealed bids? So I kind of ran into this, somewhat of the same issue here on a county level with a county road. Volunteer, fix it up, I get it. I was willing to do the same thing and you were sitting in the commission office at the same time. And I fought and fought and fought. I was willing to fix my section of road, three quarters of a mile on a county road. My time, my fuel, my truck, my blade. Could not touch it. Because legally binding, if you was to come drive down my road and you crashed on that road, you are not an employee of the county that fixed a county road. Where does that fall in a city? Without a contract. And legal binding liability. You understand what I'm saying by that? Because I touch a public road even though they declared it a minimum maintenance road that was a physical county road. I could not touch it legally. So just keep that.
Making a motion, that doesn't make a difference if we're allowing him to do it?
Here's the thing. Well, and it might, but I'm just letting you guys know before you guys get back to your corner, and I'm not saying, I'm not against that and I'm not for it because I see Dan zipping around cleaning the snow, doing different things when we need stuff done. I just don't want you guys to get yourselves in a pickle all of a sudden down the deal because somebody runs a stop sign, even though they run the stop sign, it's literally their fault. And it comes back, well, Dan worked on the road and we got this tiny little hump of gravel that might have set that car off to get everybody in a pickle. So I just want you guys to think about that in a circle legally to make sure it's good to go.
Thank you.
On a volunteer basis.
Thank you so much. Dan?
Thank you. In the past, it was determined that within the regulations of the municipality, third-class municipality, as long as that individual was allowed to be a volunteer by a motion and had insurance for his equipment, he was okay to be the one operating and working on it under its authority.
And all volunteers are not created equal either, so we, we know that this volunteer has, is skilled in the industry and is donating his skilled labor, so the board has a discretion to exercise or not. And if it's sound discretion, it feels that Dan or anybody else can do the job properly, then absolute.
So do we have a motion? And again, what is it?
Um, the motion was allow Dan Halsworth to volunteer on street maintenance.
So.
His time and equipment on a street maintenance plan.
And to make sure he. Yes, to fill out the paperwork. You have, you have to sign the paperwork too, Dan, on that. The volunteer paperwork, you'll have to come up and sign it, please. And that goes for anybody, by the way, um, and all of our, yeah, probably you too, Trina, yes.
I might get injured, will be.
Now, you never know what'll happen. And the motion, uh, was made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
The contract.
I was gonna say, and I have seen the maintenance plan before, tonight, um, back when I talked with Dan before. I was just talking to the board in general between us.
All right, so we have a volunteer for the streets and we will, um, we will all look at the contract here. we will all look at the contract here and get back with you on that. Okay? So, oh, that brings us to items from citizens. Any comments? Any questions?
Really? You'll let me go? Spectacular. Uh, February twenty-second, we have the Fairburn Volunteer Fire Department, fundraiser, community picnic and fundraiser starting at four o'clock. Everybody's welcome to come down, free will donation, I'm cooking.
When is it? February?
No, September twenty-second. Why the flyers right there?
I was thinking, whoa, you expect this to remember though? September twenty-second.
September twenty-second, flyers right there. Um, welcome all.
What's, what's cooking, huh?
Uh, looks like we've got some brisket, hamburgers, hot dogs. Probably, maybe. I don't know, depends on if you show up or not. Get your checkbook out. Yeah, you know, um, probably have some beans. They just kinda left it up to me. We gotta be there tonight. Probably finalize the menu, but I don't know. They dropped some briskets off at the house the other day for me.
Well, thank you.
He's a good cook.
You, you're, you're testifying he's a good cook?
He's a good cook.
I ain't worth a shit. I got eight out of eight at the county fair. I live and come eat none of my shit.
Thank you.
That's why you said February.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, oh, I could celebrate my anniversary.
Any other? Yes?
Um, I, and I've talked to Chuck some and Anthony some too. I just, the joys and excitement of pumping the room are kinda over for us. And we've talked when we met down here before. I said, I wondered if we could see a plan sometime of the, when it's done, what it'll kinda look like. Well, Bill, do you know? I don't, yeah, I don't know if there's somewhere I can see that. I mean, we've, when we've talked in the past, it's been, it'd be nice if there'd be a button we could push or a valve to open that would allow the water out of lagoons, but it doesn't need pumping. I don't know exactly how that works. Chuck explained some the other day, but it soaks in kinda slow. But assuming the treatment plan will be able to be land-applied anywhere for lots, right?
Yeah. We treat it, we get closer to home. Right now, it's a stay at quarter on all legs.
Yeah, so it'd just be nice if we could open a valve and have it come up out of the ground over here where it could be utilized.
I will get with Dan's being, we'll maybe have a meeting where we, you can talk here and what.
Yeah, that'd be, and Chuck's explains some. I just don't know how all the stuff works and I think the rest of the family will get to see something.
Sounds good. Thank you. Alright, um, any others? Dan?
I just wanna say congratulations to the board, um, for your hard work. I mean, it's a tough job and not everybody can stand up to the trials and tribulations in the terms of what you guys go through and what you deal with. So for the volunteering, for the hard work, for the commitment, I appreciate all of you. And for your commitment for the town, looking out for the best. I wanna thank Anthony for all his hard work, Trina for all her hard work, and where we're headed in the right direction. So I appreciate all of you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I want my Dan for all's- all the volunteering.
Trusty input.
I would like to apologize for Connie. I will totally accept my apology.
Shannon? Cal?
I'll alert that to the, apologize to the board members for getting that out of place on there.
Uh, I just thank you to Trina for volunteering to do the website. Thanks to Dan for volunteering to do the streets. It's greatly needed and, um, it's a long meeting, but we, we're here at the end and so let's get on out.
You're welcome. So I'm trusty of the air.
Well, I guess thank you to everybody here for trusting me with this. And, uh, I'll try not to let everybody out there down. Do what I can. Well, yeah, basically, right?
Right, my own trusty input, I'd like to thank the office staff. They've done a lot of investigative work, um, this last couple of weeks and they've done very well. I appreciate them very much for being here. Anthony, always, um, greatly appreciate you being here. Chuck, same thing. I appreciate you. And, um, I would like to thank all the citizens for coming and listening and putting forth, um, your opinions. It helps. Uh, and I'd like to remind, remind everybody that as board members, none of us are professionals. We all do our best. We try to do the reading and the research as we can also. And we're trying to do the best. We're here because our hearts are in the right places to help the town of Hermosa and our citizens. And thank you very much all for coming. Thank you, Kent, very much for your pitch.
Absolutely, thank you.
Donna wants to know how many hours she has left. Alright, on that note, I would take a, um, motion.